To take a flag down if they want to fly a flag as offensive or as it may be. So, you know, that's sort of the situation. I would be careful about the idea of writing a letter to them. Because you, you know, at some point we cross a line. On the other hand, if the village wanted to put out some sort of statement saying that they think that Confederate flag is offensive or inappropriate and I think that would be perfectly appropriate. But clearly, somebody has, you know, the right to, First Amendment right to fly a Confederate flag on their private property. Somebody could burn an American flag if they wanted to do that, too. They can do all sorts of political statements. Be free from governmental interference with respect to that.
Judy, you said there was sort of two parts of that email, right? What was the other part?
No, just she, she sent me a picture of it, which I just sent to Keaton. I don't know if he wants to put it up or not, but he was offended by it.
Mine is frozen or the whole system is frozen.
At your house. You may just want to connect verbally, you know, audio.
I'm putting up the picture right now.
But she, she was just, I don't know if she was a minority or not, but then she did send me an email later that said that a biracial company, a biracial couple just moved in on Monroe.
So?
So, and this woman also, this woman also lives on Garrison, but that's about all she gave me. So I did tell, like I said, I did tell her to call the police because I didn't think there was anything that we could do.
Yeah, it's the stars and bars.
Right, yeah.
Yep. That's not the, that's not the
Right.
The orange flag. That, that was actually a, not the official flag of the Confederacy. That is.
It's a very early on flag.
Right. It is the flag of the Confederate states of America.
Yeah, that's the actual national flag.
Yeah, right. The other flag was a battle flag.
Right.
Okay, well, I think that, you know, Chip really gave us a, you know, a good direction as to what we can and cannot do. So unless somebody has any further discussion about this, I think we need to move on.
No, I think we can, I mean, the only thing we can do is keep up with positive messaging.
Is the system working? Somehow I lost everything.
You went dark. I can't see you, but I can hear you.
All right, then I'll, okay, but I can't hear either. Right.
Cancel and try to reconnect.
Yeah.
Have a suggestion?
You can't hear me. I'll text him.
All right, okay. Okay, I'll do, I'll do that. Thank you.
I need to talk to Keaton.
Okay.
Hey, guys. Yeah, Basil's gonna reconnect.
Okay.
I was just saying, I think we should just keep up a positive messaging campaign. You know, Facebook and Nextdoor and whatever else, just, you know.
I had Keaton, I had Keaton put the statement that he made on Facebook. I had him put it on the website, too.
I saw that. Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, for anyone who didn't see it yet, hold on. So what I did is I kind of took the "Love Always" wings that we posted on Facebook a few weeks ago, and then I took the last two lines from the post. And in order to do it, I had to take our tagline off, which is, you know, "historic place to live, work, and play." But this is, you know, just a temporary thing. It can stay on there for whatever, weeks or a couple, a month or two, whatever. So this will always be there, and it stays there even as the slideshow moves across, so.
I think we should just continue, as Matt said, in that direction and, and that's, and move on with the agenda tonight.
Yep.
Any other correspondence?
Actually, I had one that came in, came in about 2:30 today. So the Williamsville Depot, their fundraising committee is meeting this week to formulate a letter to anyone that can help financially support the project to get the, the new locomotive at the Williamsville Depot. And they're kind of inviting people from area government agencies such as Williamsville and the town to a stakeholder meeting at 4:00 PM on July 7th, and I can forward this to everybody. I mean, I, I plan on just, just going myself, if anyone else wants to go. The idea is to discuss where to put the locomotive if and when it arrives. And Marty Vissiano, the Vice President and Trustee of Western New York Railway Historical Society, asked that, you know, we invite the board, and it'll be a short meeting just to discuss the options that have been laid out. It's an onsite visit that should make it easier to understand, so, you know, it'll be outside, so, you know, we'll be able to social distance and, and everything. But just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention because that's coming up in a couple of weeks, so.
Okay, can you just also put that on our Facebook page and our website as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just letting everyone know.
We have another thing I just got from Ben Villanen. He would, he would like everyone to know that Pete Villanen wants seven signs that read, "Not allowed dogs, pets off leash, or horses posted throughout Glen Park."
No. No.
There are no signs. Yeah, the signage already indicates no, no dogs and pets.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, like, did somebody, like, build a barn in the middle of the village recently? I don't know about them. They got wild horses running through.
I think it's for you, Deb. I think he thinks you're gonna let your daughter come ride.
Well, you know what? I actually am erecting a barn, but my horses will not get out of the stalls, so, you know, I'm a responsible horse owner. Yep, but, yeah, the answer's no.
I ju, I just received an email from somebody who's watching and listening. They said that you're not as audible as the others, Deb. I don't know if you're speaking close to the microphone or whatever, but so, just an FYI.
I've got it up to, like, almost the whole way, my volume, so it might be like the connection here at Village Hall.
Yeah, okay. But, I mean, I can hear it fine, so it should be okay for the recording. So anybody who might have missed something you said, I haven't yet, but anyone who has can obviously view the recording. That'll be up tomorrow, so. Anyway, that's all I had.
Okay, question. Ben, did you get the signage up over on School Street yet?
I just got it clear on the underground utilities.
Okay.
So that'll go in probably tomorrow.
Okay, great, great, thank you. Just for everyone, Gil Kinshafter, the Dean of Student Services, reached out to me from Christian Central, and she was just kind of following up. You know, the one-way signage has been taken down over there, and she was inquiring as to when the school crossing and new speed limit signage and so forth, you know, would be put up. So that's great. This week will be perfect. All right, thank you. Any other correspondence before we move on? Okay, all right, so under "Work Session" for me, I wanted to have a discussion about certified local government status and its effects for the village. And the reason that I prompted this discussion this evening is because after our last board meeting two weeks ago, we took a vote on 13 landmarks on village property or on personal, you know, private property. And after that, I was told that I couldn't vote, or perhaps I shouldn't vote just because a resident doesn't want it. And I just kind of wanted to maybe get a better understanding of what it means for us to have a certified local government and how that may or may not interfere with my ability as an elected official. So, so let's have a discussion here tonight, and no decisions need to be made tonight, but I think we need to start discussing it.
All right, well, I'll just, if, Matt, I think will probably talk about conversation he had with the Chippewa folks today, but just because I was the person who, just to be clear, I, you, all of you can do, vote any way you want on anything. But what I was pointing out was that due to this village's certified local government status, there is a certified CLG restriction that comes along with that, that our historic preservation program, in order to be CLG certified, cannot allow for property owner veto. We can still have a historic preservation program that would have that sort of element. It's just that it, that would run afoul of the CLG requirements, and therefore Chippewa might conceivably revoke CLG status, which I think then prompted the mayor's question. It's like, well, how important is it that we have the CLG status? So that, I think, is what prompted the, the question and the discussion. And it is totally a voluntary thing. There's no requirement for the village to be a CLG. Most, you know, it is true, most low, Western New York communities that have historic preservation programs are CLGs, but it is not a requirement to have a historic preservation program to, to be a CLG.
So, so Chip, so we can still have a Historic Preservation Commission, but not maybe have, maybe lose our CLG status based upon, you know, perhaps how the village board votes or doesn't vote on any particular?
Well, again, I don't, I, I think it's less, I mean, I don't know, and Matt, like I said, I have not discussed that issue with Chippewa as to what, what I was, what, what I do think is true is if we tried to codify our historic preservation law that says, under note, you know, you cannot, a property cannot be designated a landmark or a district cannot be designated.
Hazel?
Thanks.
Or a district cannot be designated a district over the objection of the property owner. That that, the Chippewa would not approve that as a CLG certified historic preservation program. If, short of that, if, if board members vote in that way and make it clear that that is the policy that they take, I honestly don't know what Chippewa would do about that. Maybe Matt had that discussion with them today.
I can answer that question.
I'm gonna let Matt, because I know that Mary Loether had sent an email later in the afternoon, and I know, Matt, you had gotten off, so I'm gonna kind of let you go through it and explain and maybe clear some things up for us.
Sure, okay, so, as Chip was saying, so the certified local government status, it's a completely voluntary program. It's a program that doesn't even take legislative motion to engage in. It's simply a request from the mayor's office to participate in this program. And the, you have to, to, to make that request, you have to meet certain minimum requirements. And at the time that we did, we signed up for this, you know, whatever that was, 15, 20 years ago, whatever, we met those requirements. We still do. We maintain our preservation, you know, code. We maintain our HPC, you know, whatnot. We, we meet these, these dictates. Now, here's the thing. When I was speaking with Chippewa, he was, he said more times than I can count that CLG is a positive thing. It is a supportive thing, and it is far from being a punitive thing. So, over the last year and a half or so, I've had CLG thrown in my face as like, we're potentially sacrificing this, and it's this, you know, like, you know, overwhelming sort of, you know, overbearing type of, of thing, and why do we have this and, and all this stuff? Here's the thing. All it is, all that it is, is the financial arm of Chippewa. To level the playing field, because they, they offer grant money to CLG certified local governments, they had to create a baseline, a minimum set of standards that all of those governments have to maintain so that they are all on a level playing field and they're all eligible the same. They also, they did not create new regulations. It does not create like a new layer of regulation. However, what they have is they have clarified what is otherwise a very complicated and esoteric regulation at the state level for the enabling legislation for historic preservation. They've also combined and written down in words certain aspects of the enabling legislation that are vague or implied but not explicit, or have been challenged by case law and, you know, been modified in some way for interpretation purposes. Now they've come back and they've said, okay, well, we've taken all of that information. We've condensed it down into an understandable format for municipal municipalities, so you don't have to be a wizard to understand what's the requirements. Now, specific to this particular issue, the way that the, the bylaws of the certified local government are writ is that, you know, for instance, they want you to, to, to be eligible, you have to be open to, for instance, all forms of designation, that, that you can't limit it to just commercial or just residential or just this or just that. That anything that could be designated shall have the opportunity to be designated. It does not mean that you have to pursue those designations. You just have to not limit the opportunity to pursue it. You know, if someone were to choose to do so. To do that would be to run afoul of the regulations that they're putting on you, that, that baseline level that's applying to everybody. They're not saying that you can't do that, but you can't do that as a certified local government. The other thing is that, that the, the stipulation that Chip brought up about, you know, voter, landowner veto. All of this comes from a place of attempting to apply historic preservation grant, nominations and designations in terms that people already understand, and, and the premise being like zoning regulations, for instance. We, the village board, could rezone a neighborhood. And while we'll have a public hearing on it, just because the neighborhood says, "We don't want that," doesn't mean that we don't rezone it. We might have reasons to rezone it, that they're either unaware of or don't care about or whatever. But the point is that regulation by default is not voluntary. You know, government regulation is what it is because it's being handed down to you. It's not meant to be discretionary to individuals, right? So he then acknowledges, this is James Finelli from Chippewa, by the way, who I was talking to. He acknowledges that that analogy only goes so far, that when it comes down to, in particular, residential designations, that there is a flavor to the fact that that's kind of almost like a spot zoning, if you want to stretch the zoning analogy, that you're, you're individualizing that parcel as opposed to the next one, as opposed to a neighborhood, right? And so when you, when you use that zoning analogy, the premise of a residential district makes more sense as opposed to an individual residential property, right? Because you're, you're grabbing a chunk as opposed to one. But all of these have gray areas surrounding them. So the point is, though, that to what Chip was saying, to violate the CLG status would be to codify something that would be counter to their minimum baseline standard. So were we to say that residential designations are straight up not an option? Just period. Not gonna happen. That would run afoul of the, of the mandate to permit any sort of general designation. And therefore, when that local law was submitted to Chippewa for their review, it would be DOA. And Chippewa would come back and say, you know, guys, I see what you're trying to do here, but this runs afoul of your CLG status. Now, they don't get upset about it. They're not, they're not sending the, the jackbooted, you know, Chippewa police after us. They're just gonna say, hey, you know, that's, that's a problem for us. And if it's, if that's okay with you, that you're sacrificing that, then the mayor needs to send us a letter that says, "We've decided to go a different direction." We like our, we'd like our classification, we'd like to be declassified. And it, it's a paperwork administrative review, and bing, zam, zoom, poof, you're no longer a CLG. And you get to write your law however you want. Here's the rub. The purpose of the CLG in trying to make all of these standards understandable is also to help minimize potential liability. So it, they, when you have that CLG status, you have Chippewa at your, at your back. And they have written these rules, regulations to try and make them clear and understandable so that you keep yourself out of hot water. If you choose to declassify yourself as a CLG, then they say, "Have a nice life. Good to know you. Good luck to you. Don't call us. We'll call you." And so when you run afoul of some, you know, idiosyncratic historical preservation law that's buried in the state enabling legislation, you could be sued because you don't have the support of Chippewa to back you up to say, you know, you're running afoul of that. So the CLG status has benefits for us to, A, avoid legislation issues, avoid lawsuit issues. B, to help standardize and simplify the approach to preservation. His comment was, "You can do preservation, and you can do it poorly, or you can do preservation and you can do it well. We are here to help you do it well." So they want to be, you know, they're supportive. Then, thirdly, it is a funding source. So we, in the village, have benefited to, to James' comment, quote, "A disproportionate amount of money has been granted to the village of Williamsville by comparison to any other municipality statewide." They get, the, the Chippewa gets a million and a half a year from the feds. 10% of that is required to go to the CLG communities in form of grant money. He says there's about 70 statewide. Not everybody applies for money every year. We have been given, what Judy was able to find today, CLG money specifically for the HPC into the tune of $47,000 just in the last, like, four or five years. We have also received CLG grant money for Glen Park, the mill, the meeting house, and we're eligible for section house, and to a lesser extent, I think even the depot. It is a, it is, it is basically free money. Anywhere, you, you can pretty much be guaranteed about a $10,000 grant if you apply for it as long as you have a, you know, a meritous grant application. But you can get $29,000 to $30,000 at a lump sum, depending on what your approach is, what you're doing. So if we shut the door on the CLG status, we turn that spigot off, it's gone. Not even an option. The other thing is, the CLG status, while it does not actually, I don't know how to say this correctly, but it doesn't actually, like, factor in so much to other grant applications, having it is a feather in your cap. It gives you an extra point in the review of EPF grants and other grants because you do have that designation. So while it doesn't directly give you additional funding, it gives you us a leg up on other applications for other funding. So his, his ultimate comment was, you know, he's here, he hears this a lot, this question about CLG and is it worth having and all this stuff, and he says, in his opinion, it would be a mistake to get rid of it. Now, he says, "The real bigger question that you have to ask yourself is, is preservation something the community wants to do or not?" Because the CLG does not establish our HPC. It does not establish our local preservation laws. It simply provides a guideline to, in a framework to work within for those. Were we to forego our CLG status, we would simply be shutting the door on the support and, and financial side, which seems shortsighted. The bigger question is, do we have an issue with how the HPC is implementing the preservation laws? Is there a bigger conversation that needs to be had with what our community priorities are with relation to preservation? His comment about how to go about establishing community priorities without running afoul of CLG regulations is to decide what you want to pursue. So if, in a conversation between the village board and the HPC, excuse me, HPC, it was decided that there was not a, a great deal of sympathy for residential districting, residential designations, more or less of any kind, and that it would be, it would be more in the board's interest or the community's interest to focus our attentions on, let's say, the section house or something to that effect, and that that's where the energy should be placed, then that's fine. Do that. It's when you codify it that you run afoul of the CLG. When you write that down and you say, this is, it's, you're doing this and nothing else, that's where you have a problem. But administering your own local preservation law is entirely yours. And he says, "Chippewa has not, does not want anything to do with local politics." They don't care, and they're not coming down saying, "What are you doing?" Now, the other thing I've had thrown in my face is the threat of an audit. CLG audit. I'm sure you've probably all heard this at one point or another. Oh, my God, you know, you don't want to do that because look out, Chippewa's coming to audit you. Here's the thing. I asked him straight out, what, what are the things that get you audited? And basically, to be, you, you get audited, it's a, the audit is really just a fact finding to justify, you know, the potential for the removal of your municipality from the CLG for certain things that may have been problematic for them. And the two, there really only were two. I asked for three or four. He gave me two. Two primary things that would get you, you know, would, would run afoul would be code changes that make it noncompliant with their standard, or removing significant requirements from our, our local laws that, that, you know, would otherwise make it noncompliant. Or two, years, he stressed years, so not like a year, multiple years, of blatant noncompliance with their regulations, you know, intentionally making a point of running afoul of the regulations. So coming back to what started all of this, and the conversation about voting for or against something based on the, the landowner's, you know, preference, the, the, the CLG law is written from the perspective that government regulations are not discretionary and they're handed down because that, they wouldn't be called regulations if they weren't. But when it comes to your individual voting record, if you choose to side with the homeowner, that's your call. And that does not run afoul of the CLG status, and that does not reflect a blatant disregard for the regulations of the CLG. And it wouldn't bring out an audit, and it's not going to cause any sort of kerfuffle. If the entire board made it a habit over and over and over and over again to say, "Nap, no, nap, no," with no discretion, no written record, no, you know, no quality of, of approach, that would start to raise red flags. But even still, it would require someone to say, "They're not doing this right." Chippewa's not reading the newspaper and following our meeting minutes and saying, "Are they appropriately applying these regulations?" It, it comes to their attention because someone wants it to. not because they're monitoring our efforts. So I think that answers the vast majority of Mary's questions. And I think that hits the bulk of the point I wanted to make is that really, I think the bigger issue is whether or not we value preservation in the community and we have a desire to elevate certain types of preservation and downplay others. And maybe this is something that happens on a fairly rotating basis. I had a conversation with Kate today, and I think one of the things that we seem to struggle with is that we don't have an open channel of communication between this board and the HPC. It is primarily me, and quite frankly, my throat is dry and I'm tired of freaking talking about it. I don't know why five adults and seven adults can't all get into a room and have a decent, normal human conversation about direction and progress in the village. And I don't think that HPC would be opposed to that. I think it should be something that maybe should be done on an annual basis or semi-annual, whatever makes the most sense, and that we can talk with each individual machination of each board and commission and decide what direction is a priority for us in the next 12 months, and then strive for that. That we're working together, not against each other. That this pervasion, this persuasive environment of negativity and adversarialism has to stop. It just does, and it has nothing to do with our CLG status. And CLG is not a cudgel, and it should not be whacked over people's heads because it's potentially tenuous at best. We need to work better locally within ourselves.
So that's a lot that you've just covered. But I just want to clarify that the emails that were going around after our last meeting, when I made it very forthright, that the reason I voted no on those three properties is because the owners were opposed to them. So three were voted no out of the 13 public hearings that we held that night. So I guess the problem that I will continue to have with a certified local government status and Historic Preservation Commission is that as an elected official, I am here to listen to the voice of residents. And when a resident, let's just talk about the wall on Mill Street, that, any type of maintenance of that wall or repair or rebuild or whatever, completely falls upon the homeowner. Okay, so if the homeowner is saying, I really, I like the wall, but if it comes down, I'm not gonna lose my mind, and I would prefer to have it not be marked as a historic landmark. You know, as an elected official, I feel like I'm embattled now between what HPC is looking from us to do and then my role as an elected is. Because to me, when that resident comes out and asks for that, I don't know what other way I could possibly vote other than no. So that's gonna be something that I'm gonna continue to struggle with in this position.
And I don't think it's supposed to be easy. The bigger question that I think is posed, and it's more philosophical, and every year, situation's different. But again, with the zoning analogy, you grab as much as you can, you get as much right as you can, and the rest gets dealt with on its case-by-case basis. Now, the underlying principle to historic preservation of anything is for the public good, for the community at large. For the, I mean, it's in its name, it's historic preservation, right? So using the wall on Mill Street as an example, which is an unfortunate example, given the circumstances that swirl around it. But that wall has been a fixture of the community at the intersection of Mill and Glen for going on 100 years. It is an identifying marker, I mean, it is by definition a landmark. You know, people are familiar with that view, right? And so from that perspective, the question becomes, why is it one person's decision to take that away from the next 100 years' worth of community? So the question becomes, if this is meant to be a discretionary process, then by default, anyone will say, I don't want it. But if you truly are here to represent all of the electorate, and in this particular scenario, future generation, the question becomes, what is the greatest benefit to the community versus the balance and the weight of the potential negative to the landowner? And the trouble is, that conversation is significantly easier on a commercial property. It's on an income-bearing property. So the burden is theoretically lessened to a degree. Commercial properties tend to have more government regulations attached to them in the form of zoning and planning and all kinds of other things layered on top of them. People generally wrap their head around that, they accept that. That's the norm. When you personalize it and you bring it down to the scale of the individual homeowner, the individual property owner, now suddenly, you're digging into their pocketbook. And that's the problem that you have to balance. Now, if your approach and your perspective is that, well, that's just too much, then that's your perspective. I mean, that is what it is. That's the reason we have five voices, that's the reason we have two public hearings. It's, you know, that's why this process exists. But that doesn't mean that the process is bad. It just means that that's where your head's at in the process, and so be it. I mean, what's the problem? Why, we don't have to tear it all down just because that one situation will rear its ugly head periodically and you'll feel compelled to defy it. So what, that's your prerogative, that's why you have your voice.
Well, no, I'm not having this discussion tonight to tear it all down, as you just said. I'm having this discussion because in that email, Matt, you were the one that said, when I raised my right hand and took an oath as mayor, that I somehow committed myself to CLG, and that is anything but the truth. Because that is not at all where my head was at that night when I took an oath. I just want to clarify, I'm not trying to tear this process down, but I think that there's a lot of vagueness and red tape embroiled in this entire thing. And I'm just trying to clear it up and make it more transparent for everybody.
Okay, so let me just comment on that then. So we all swore an oath to uphold the laws of the village, state, and federal government, right? CLG is state law. Whether we have that designation or not, it is New York state law. And all they've done is clarify that New York state law. So when we took an oath to uphold the New York state laws, we took an oath to uphold CLG status that we have because our prior government sought that for the betterment and the benefit of the community.
So then why have public hearings? Why even, you know, so HPC has a set of public hearings that cost us time and money because our attorney, Chip Greco, is also available at these meetings. And then they give us a recommendation, and then we take our time, which is essentially village taxpayer dollars because we're all getting paid a salary here, and we hold our public hearings. So I guess my question is, if HPC, I mean, if they just need to make the decision perhaps at their level and put the gavel down, then maybe that's where it needs to end. But I think that we're on a slippery slope because this is exactly why Bloker has happened the way it has. You know, we had a village board who many years ago gave all of its power essentially over to the planning board when it came to decisions like the Bloker Home Project. So when we were getting letters and emails from residents saying, can't you do anything, you're a village board, you're the mayor, you're trustee E2, no, I'm sorry, ma'am, sir, I can't do a thing because several years back, the code was changed to such that that kind of took that authority out of our hands as a board. And so I guess, you know, this is like that slippery slope that we're on here with this. I mean, where do we want to land with this? And I gotta tell you, for me, a public hearing is to be held for one reason and one reason only, to collect the information from the people who speak and to sit there and make a decision based on that information. Not on some CLG guideline, not on what HPC's recommendation is, but on our feelings and thoughts. Otherwise, if I can't sit up here and make a decision and get scolded for the votes that I did two weeks ago, then what's the point of even having public hearings at the village board level? Let HPC hold a public hearing, close it up, and render a vote. And when we get 50 residents screaming that they don't want their property, I'm sorry, sir, ma'am, yeah, I know I'm elected and I'm supposed to be your voice, but I'm sorry, you'll have to go talk to HPC about that. I mean, that's where we're heading, it's gotta be one way or another.
No, it really doesn't, and every situation is not zero or one. Quite the opposite, in fact. I mean, you use planning as an example, and I think it's a good example, but it's actually proving your point in reverse. So, you know, here's the thing about, and I talked to James Finelli about this as well. What's sort of unique in this is, you know, in a planning example, an interested party has made an application to pursue a project, right? That's someone who has come to the municipality to ask permission to do something, right? In the landmark nomination process, not exclusively, but I think a disproportionate amount of the nominations that have been made in the Village of Williamsville have actually been generated from members of HPC. So they're executing the mission that has been given to them as a commission to pursue the preservation of our historic Village of Williamsville, right? Now, here's the problem with that process, right? In the planning board's example, you have an individual who wants to do something. And they're saying, please, sir, may I do this? And the municipality says, well, wait, 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 wait. You know, you gotta meet this, you gotta meet that, we gotta take a look at it, we gotta make sure that it works with us, you work with us, we work with you. It's a negotiation, right? Ultimately, you get to the end, the planning board makes a decision. Now, we don't have to make Planning Board the deep beyond it all. Town of Lancaster's Planning Board is a recommending body. They recommend to the town board, and the town board gives it a rubber stamp. But that's exactly what it is. It's a rubber stamp, because almost without fail, in the Town of Lancaster, whatever the planning board recommended, the town board just executes anyway. It's just the way their ordinance is written, right? I have no idea how long the Village of Williamsville's Planning Board has been a decision-making body, but it's been as long as I've been a resident here and longer than that. So I suspect it may go back quite a ways. And in fact, given what we've learned about the weirdness of the durations of the terms and things, I think it goes back to before the concept of a planning board. Goes back to the Planning Commission, 80s, 70s, something like that. I mean, we're talking decades, okay? So the Planning Board has had discretionary approval on site plan for as long as we've all been alive. We don't have to keep it that way, we could change it. But it creates more red tape. And since you're looking for ways to reduce red tape, that would be a bad approach. On the other hand, given that in the historic preservation aspect, with very few exceptions, the nomination tends to come from within. The very commission that's writing and accepting the nomination is then holding a public hearing on said nomination. It's kind of a forgone conclusion that that same commission would likely be in favor of their own nomination. So it really would be a very silly thing to do to leave 100% of the power in that commission. It is also exceedingly rare in the Village of, in New York State, to have it set up that way. So to your point, Mayor, if you want to give the people a voice that you feel that they may not have, then having the second planning board, the second public hearing, is in fact that mechanism, which is why it's set up that way by default. And the CLG is exactly what you said. It is a set of guidelines. It is a recommendation for how to approach this process, to keep you out of hot water. You are not obliged to buy into every one of them as a person. You can run afoul of that as a person, as a voting member of this board. That's fine, but it is still a guideline by which to pursue the process. If you decided, if this board decided to codify a different approach that ran afoul of the guidelines, that's where the CLG starts to become problematic for us. So theoretically, this thing is a tool for our benefit. It is not in any way a hindrance, nor should you feel compelled to, it is also not a process that is telling you what you should think or how you should approach your vote. It is simply saying that when you approach the vote, these are the things you should consider and what's recommended by New York state law, which he also admits runs afoul of the federal process. The national preservation process does require some community involvement before the nomination is made. New York State changed that regulation when it was adopted in Albany decades and decades and decades and decades ago. It is just the way New York state law is written. But, you know, that's just something to keep in mind. It's not something to tell you how to do what you're doing.
Good enough, well, I think that takes us into Chapter 47 amendment. So, you know, my thoughts on this was, we recently voted unanimously to pass Chapter 47. And then after the hornet's nest that ensued after that in the last two weeks, you know, I came up with the idea that perhaps, you know, should we consider allowing private property owners, and I'm not referring to business owners in this one, I'm just saying, homeowners, the ability to say no thank you to a historic nomination on their property. So I just want to have that discussion with Chip to see if that's even something we can do and get some comments from the board as well.
It is something you can do, but you would have to give up the CLG status to do it. Another approach, another approach that James Finelli suggested was that if there was concern locally about, let's just say, residential nominations, just to differentiate something, right? There was a concern that residential nominations were in fact somehow different than commercial nominations, and that the minimum process that's handed down by New York state law and clarified by CLG, we feel isn't enough for one reason or another. We can codify local additions to that process. So, for example, we'll use a residential district as an example. If HPC were to pursue an intensive-level survey of, let's say, Oak Grove, you know, they're gonna follow the reconnaissance-level survey, it's identified those parcels on Oak Grove. Now, they get money from CLG, let's say, to hire a consultant to do the intensive-level survey. And at the same time that that's happening, they are using, let's say, CLG money as well that they've gotten because we've got this great grant process. they are using, let's say, CLG money as well that they've gotten because we've got this great grant process that we can utilize. And we applied for two grants, one for a consultant for the survey and one for a public outreach program, right? And HPC uses the time that the consultant is working on in the neighborhood and knocking on doors and things. And at the same time, they're holding a bunch of informative sessions, they're reaching out to the neighbors, they're knocking on doors, they're handing out pamphlets. They're they're really, you know, winning the hearts and minds and 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 overwhelming everyone with with information about, you know, what they're what they're proposing to do, why they're pursuing it, what the benefits are, how they, you know, whatever might be the case. And at the end of that effort, you know, a lion's share of those residents are like, you know, that's a really great idea. I do feel that way. I do feel that's important, blah, blah, blah. And and they they pursue the nomination of the neighborhood now because they've got majority support, right? If that if that same group of people then came to our public hearing, you would have a very different approach than what happened with South Cayuga, right? And and so in doing this, the the village board could codify an approach to, let's say, residential district that requires them to follow those extra steps and to show that that effort has been made and and that, you know, and that the neighbors are actually awake and aware of what's happening around them. Because the one bad thing that happened with South Cayuga was the enormous gap of time between the initial alarm and threat that was associated with with the Jordans subdividing their parcel and the actual submission of the nomination. And people forgot about it, right? And they weren't paying attention anymore. So if we maintain just a little head of steam on these things and we pursue this in a way that wins the hearts and minds, then by the time it gets to us, no one's wasted their time, right? And no one's upset about things. Now, I mean, I guess 50% of the people could still be upset, but the point is at least 100% are, right? So that's something that we could do within the confines and the guidelines of CLG because we haven't we haven't prohibited the designation of a of a district. We've just said, to make sure that it's successful, we want you to follow these extra steps. And that would be okay. And that might help to inform the process for the next time, the future, whatever. But more important than that, any code writing we do is communication.
So I think, you know, what you just said is very, very real because I think that the way that the historic districting over on South Cayuga was handled, that intensive level survey, I believe, was done 2007. What was the date on that?
Seventeen.
I'm sorry, 17?
I think, yeah.
Okay, and so it it was, you know, the way that you explained it about, you know, getting residents educated and getting that buy-in and, you know, explaining things. None of that was done until, you know, the day and there was a meeting in September where
Oh, yeah.
you know, there was a knee-jerk nomination of the districting that our attorney put the brakes on because legally it wasn't allowed to happen because the public hadn't been noticed. I think that that one, and I'm gonna call it a fateful day because I think it was. I think it was a very fateful day for the way that HPC operates. And unfortunately, I think it did a lot of damage for the entire districting. And it is unfortunate because I know they received grant money from New York State to have that intensive level survey done. And I think had it had it just been handled differently, like you just said, Matt, from start to finish, I think that everybody in that district would just have a better taste in their mouth at this point about it. And I don't know how you fix that. I'm open to suggestions on it. And I think, you know, it just I think just the way it was handled is is just unfortunate.
So to that end, a couple of things. I'm not sure that we necessarily need to fix anything. Something else that I I clarify with with Shippo is with regards to the money and the grant money that we've received. There is a desire on Shippo's part to see their money used faithfully, effectively, and, you know, with follow-through, right? However, to clarify what follow-through means is to say that if you apply for a grant for a specific task and you pursue that task and you complete that task and you have a product at the end of that task, and in this case, let's say it's an intensive level survey of the neighborhood, there there is no expectation on Shippo's part that you're required to take another step with a caveat. So the the grant applications are all, God bless you, are all weighed by merit. So if a municipality filed for a grant every year for an intensive level survey of some other neighborhood of their of their of their municipality and never did anything with them except except hold down a shelf with all intensive little surveys they've done with Shippo's dollars. Shippo's gonna say on the next one, you know what? You've had enough. You we've given you tons of money and you've never done anything with these surveys, right? All you're doing is just filling up a shelf. Move on, do something else, right? But there's so many other pieces of the pie with regards to the historic preservation mission and mandate. You know, the education, the preservation of buildings like the mill or the section house, things like that, that are all eligible for these CLG monies. And so if we file for a grant for a intensive level survey for South Long in 2017 and we complete that work and Shippo's happy with that work and they say, you know, good job, that's a really good report and everything, and it takes 10 years before that designation is made, then it took 10 years. There's no no harm no foul. And in the meantime, if you file for another application for, you know, education resources for Sue Palmer's initiatives, great, they'll probably support that too. And if we file for another application for, you know, to get the to get a consultant to do the the railroad depot and maybe get a consultant to do the section house stabilization, all of those, independent or combined, are all viable applications and have nothing to do with the other one and and then would and would all be weighed on their own merits. So while it's the the big, the big problem for us with the South Cayuga district and the big, I think that the the sore spot is that an an inordinate amount of effort went into that application. Huge hours, volunteer hours, went into filing that and and did so at the time with the belief that it was the desire of the neighborhood because it was initiated from within the neighborhood. And residential districts are only successful if they're initiated from within the neighborhood. So when when that process started, it seemed to be the direction one people wanted to go. Time passed, effort was put in, nomination was filed, feelings had changed. The threat had never materialized. It was arguably not representative of the neighborhood. And it may have even been misrepresented at the time that it was originally proposed. So there are, I think, hurt feelings shared by many on all sides of this because an extensive amount of effort has been put in, not just time and money from CLG, not just the consultant, the survey, but from HPC and their own volunteer hours to assemble this nomination for the largest nomination they have ever done, 40 properties at one time. And it went up in smoke, I mean, overnight. And so I think there's a great deal of confusion and disappointment and 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 hurt feelings because it seems like it was an incredibly wasted effort, which is sad because I know how much effort it takes to do this stuff. And, you know, we all put in way more hours than we're ever remunerated for, and HPC is not even collecting our year's salary. So, you know, I don't know why, to a certain degree, I question their sanity because I would have quit a long time ago.
Matt, can I can I just offer something? I know this isn't helpful comment. But, I mean, maybe it would be helpful if the board were to talk on their own or talk to the HPC and give the HPC some priorities for, you know, the current year, the current two years, you know, where we need to go. Obviously, the section house is hanging over everyone's head. I mean, I live near it, it's being vandalized often. It it is in need of some attention. And I could suggest maybe that be one of the focuses for the next, you know, year, two years because we would like to get back into a grant cycle. We didn't apply this year because because I think that we were frustrated with not having a project to bring to CLG for possible funding. So, I mean, that's where I think the HPC, we have a meeting tomorrow night and and I've held off on finalizing the agenda because, you know, I did want to, after seeing work session agenda for tonight, you know, to see where we could go moving forward to still accomplishing the goals that the village has for preservation.
I think that's, thank you, Kate.
I like having to concentrate on the section house. We put the village put a lot of money into doing that land swap with Natali to acquire the section house. And I feel like it's just been sitting there for the past three years, deteriorating even more. And as you said, Kate, it's been vandalized as well. So I think that that would be a great goal. And I think also, you know, continue of community outreach. I think Sue Palmer seems to be doing be very active with the committee and what she's doing for that. You know, just back to with this with the South Cayuga, the historic district, I think that maybe the one key point that might have been missed is when prior to that intensive level survey being done. So we all took a survey when the districting came out. There was a survey that Keaton put together. And we were all sent as residents on the street as to whether or not we were in favor of a historic district. So the whole reason that that South Cayuga was chosen initially for the district was that two members of the HPC were residents of South Cayuga, both property owners on the creek side. And there was this fear that perhaps a developer was going to come in and develop all along the creek. So I know those two members pushed the commission to take that money and do an intensive level survey then on South Cayuga. So I think that maybe in the future, rather than, you know, taking lead from two people who happen to live in the district that they're looking to promote, I think it would be better to look further to like the 40, the 50, the 60 residents of that street and say, what would your interest be in us pursuing a historic district for your neighborhood? And I think that would have created a lot less, you know, confusion for everyone. And I know that the commission put in a ton of time. I I saw, you know, I have the survey back here on my desk. I know it was a lot of work. I I saw the gentleman who was doing it going door to door, taking pictures of exteriors and doing write-ups and I mean, there's a ton of time that goes into that that survey and and also for the commission members, you know, your time putting it together and everyone else. So I just think it's it's unfortunate the way that it was, you know, pushed by, I think, those two members. And it really wasn't the majority of the street that wanted that. It was just maybe a handful of people who at the time wanted it.
Well, I'm not gonna throw those two members under the bus because apparently there were meetings for the entire street and it wasn't the two members that presented it to the HPC. It was from outside of the membership. So, you know, however that happens, obviously, we as a commission have learned a lot through this process at first about it. So we 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 are all professional people that learn from our experiences and will definitely be taking that into consideration moving forward.
And thank you, Matt, for speaking with Shippo. For me, this was very educational. I know for John, who's new to this as well. So I think I think we've all learned a lot here tonight. So thank you all for, you know, giving us more information.
Absolutely. Well, so, you know, I I realize that, you know, we topic of conversation and we don't necessarily have to close the conversation, but I also don't want this to fester. So I mean, like, you know, I guess it seems to me a relatively simple question of do we want to keep our CLG status? Yes or no? Do we want to keep our historic preservation chapter? Do we want to pursue revisions to that chapter or this, that, or the other thing? Could be a much longer conversation. And I think should be done in in concert with HPC and whatnot if that that's the direction we want to go. But I think we need to put this issue to bed because it's been festering since September.
Okay, so let's just, let's go. There's five members on the board and I think everybody needs to kind of answer Matt's questions at this point, you know, and and see where we all stand. You know, my intention tonight, um, is that you, Keaton, your screen sharing?
Channel four. We exhumed.
So, yeah.
Well, so I mean, show of hands.
So to answer your questions, Matt, for me, I would like to keep the Historic Preservation Commission. I am in no way, you know, I I like historic buildings. I, you know, just purchased a very old home and you know, I've been working with the meeting house to get that restored for the past 15 years. So I don't have a problem with that. The the one problem I do have is that when the individual property owner says, I don't want this, I would like the ability to say, okay, and then vote no on that. So that is us doing a Chapter 47 amendment. That that's where that's where I'm at.
You have that choice right now. The the again, the 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 comment was systematic years of systematic and intentional, what was the word, blatant non-compliance with the man with the regulations. One no vote every time doesn't necessitate a blatant disregard for the regulations. There's no no nothing to change except to accept that when the when a residential applicant comes in, we know Deb's gonna be in their court.
Who would go next?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with everything like we are. I definitely think we need to keep CLG. We're definitely in our HPC. And to Matt's point, you know, yeah, I think that we already have that right to vote the way we want to vote. So I don't know that we need to modify it further, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, I would say, I think, same ways as I was just saying, the same thing that that they keep keep it kind of as how it is. Because we do have that right to vote either way.
Basil? You're on mute.
You're muted. We can't hear you.
You're still muted.
Now you can hear me.
Yes.
Yes.
Basically, let's do what we have been doing. We we voted no on some of the walls and and yes on others of the walls. And we follow that approach, CLG. I mean, Shippo isn't gonna care who anyway. Yes. So keep the CLG status because I think it's important for the village long term.
Okay, so as as long as, you know, CLG, if, you know, we can vote independently and, you know, still maintain that, I that's that's fine. I just need a clarification on that. Hey, Chip? Is Chip still on?
Yep, I am. Sorry to interrupt.
So if if we were to amend Chapter 47 and put a sentence or two in there that would just, you know, blatantly state that property owners have the right to deny the nomination, what is that something that you've seen perhaps done or heard of being done in other municipalities?
No.
No, and, and like I said, you could do it, but as a CLG, we're required, just like we did with the, the new Chapter forty-seven that the board just enacted last meeting, we need to consult with Shippo regarding any amendments to our historic preservation law. So if we sent them a provision that said that, they would say, no, you can't do that. Not, at least as a CLG. I mean, that's what would happen. That would force the issue of, of CLG status. And they would say, well, if you're gonna adopt that law or we were gonna decertify you. So that's what would happen if you tried to codify that. At least that's my understa, that's certainly my understanding of the way it would work in terms of the process. And I think that's consistent with, I think, what James was probably telling Matt today. I mean, I wasn't as part of that conversation, but, but, um, based on Matt's description of that conversation, I, I'm assuming that that's, that's what would happen under that process.
That is correct.
Okay, so, um, just, just another question on top of that then. Um, you know, if I wanted to see what the general public has to say about this code amendment, um, if I were to go off agendas tonight and call for a resolution to have a public hearing at our July thirteenth meeting to amend Chapter forty-seven, is that something that I would need two other trustees to, um, agree to tonight when I call for the resolution? Or is that something that I would not need that?
Yeah, you would, I mean, a majority of the board would have to vote to, to, well, for one, you'd need to vote to go off agenda. And two, you would need, um, a majority of the board to call for that public hearing.
Okay, so, but, and then I guess my next question is, and anybody can chime in, what would be the harm of my calling for a public hearing to open it up to the public to kind of see what people think of or don't think about keeping or not keeping a certified local government status? But, uh, what, what would be the harm in that? I mean, it's essentially just like calling pretty much for any other public hearing. We just want to hear both sides and then come to a decision at the end of that, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's up to the board. It's, uh, obviously anytime, you know, that's, that's a pile, that's a decision for the board to make as to whether or not they want to have a public hearing on a proposed code amendment.
Well, I just, I guess in my history of being on the board, I've never had any board members vote against calling for any kind of public hearing because that's essentially what we do as elected officials. We like to seek public input. And so, um, I, I will be going off agenda tonight to call for a Chapter forty-seven amendment just for that. And, uh, you know, I, that's, you know, something I will be doing and we'll see what happens, I guess.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments on that tonight before we move on? Nope. Okay, um, format of logistics of future board meetings at Village Hall. Keaton, I'm gonna let you talk about this a little bit.
Yeah, actually, um, I didn't know if you kind of wanted to skip, uh, a few and go to, um, the village murals. Um, that way, we do have Deb Habe's on. Um, we, we have a lot going on after, after this point. So I didn't know if you wanted to skip around that way. She doesn't have to wait until after the meeting.
Let's do it. I didn't realize it's seven twenty, so go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, Al and Deb, if you, if you wanna take the mural, um, information on?
Hi.
You're muted, Al.
Are you talking to me, Deb Habe's?
Yep.
Yes, I'm sorry, Deb Habe's, uh, um, please feel free with you and Al to, uh, talk about the mural, uh, information. Just didn't want you to have to wait until after, after the meeting, so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Well, uh, the background is, and I've shared it with Al as our VAC beautification committee, the funds that, uh, our garden walk event has raised since the year two thousand twelve, when I became chair, um, through basket raffle from the garden walk basket raffle and donations from sponsors of the event have been targeted to improvements, not including plants, to our village gardens and in particular to the pocket park. And, uh, over the years, it's become, you know, a, a push from the membership of our volunteers, beautification committee. We plant and maintain the pocket park and, uh, the other village public gardens. And in particular, the pocket park, um, we had the honor of being invited by former mayor Brian Culpa to have a hand in the design of the pocket park. And, uh, that was a very big honor for us. We, we really appreciated that input. And I think he appreciated our input. Um, and he listened to our ideas and, um, okay, we have it in front of us. That's great. So, uh, as you can read, um, what I've given is the background to it. So over the years, because we have this, these donations have been sitting in a special account. These are, these are not part of the village budget funds. That, uh, in consulting with, uh, Ms. Kindred, our administrator, we find that we do have about at least five thousand five hundred dollars in that account. And again, those are donations, not village tax, tax money. And because we, because of the recent, um, explosion of interest, not only locally, not only American, but throughout the world of appreciation for public art and mural form in public spaces and also in private spaces, we thought it would be appropriate to offer or propose the idea of a mural being painted on the east wall of Village Hall, which abuts the pocket park and faces the pocket park. And so in trying to get this going, um, I started doing some research on local mural artists. And I came upon an artist whose name is Chris Piankowski. He's a very nice young fellow, professional artist and who has, has done, um, other murals in town and, and not in the village, but in the city of Buffalo. Um, I believe he has one in the town of Amherst on Egbert near Maine. And, um, I did share Chris's, well, I did share a PowerPoint presentation with, uh, trustee Yates and put together examples of Chris's art and also examples of, in my, in our talking with Chris about the theme that we'd like, it's a floral theme. So there's nothing controversial about it. It's an, a set, would be a celebration of the gardens, of flowers, of nature's beauty. Also to, to include the mission that beautification committee has and is going forward with each year of celebrating and, and, um, preserving the poll, pollinator-friendly plants that we have planted in all of the village public gardens that we have planted. And also to celebrate monarch butterflies and also honeybees, which are very much in danger in, uh, the climate and environment today. So in other words, we have this, uh, proposal that we're putting forward. Uh, the reason that we chose Chris Piankowski is because his work that he has demonstrated and is on view locally, um, fulfills what our committee is looking for as far as art. So that we, um, hope that the village board will consider the project. Uh, we would be spending funds that have been donated for this, for improvements in the village parks, not including plants. And this would be certainly a major improvement and also a very much, um, celebrated piece of public art. I think it would be the first mural in the village of Williamsville. There are not many murals in the town of Amherst. And, um, I think it would be a wonderful draw for drawing people in, visitors to our village parks. And it would put us on the map. Al, did you want to say anything?
You know, I, um, did the other board members get the examples? Or was that sent to everybody? Keaton, or did Keaton, you got a copy of that? The PowerPoint that she had sent over?
Do you have the PowerPoint that I sent you, Keaton?
So I, I didn't see it, but I will just say for me, um, I think I'm, I'm a definite yes. So whatever mural you decide on, I, I know will be great. So you got a yes for me.
Uh, my only, um, my only question is, how is it applied? Is it painted or is it a?
Yes, um, because he's a professional mural, mural artist and artist in general. I did ask him that. Um, he, he will use the special paints that are for exterior application. He will, um, prime the brick and then paint over it and again, paints that are made for exterior application.
Um, I, I did not get the PowerPoint, just to let you know.
Mine has been downloaded and we can share screen, but go ahead and continue talking, Al.
So let me just preface the next series of questions I have with, I, I love the idea. I, I want to see this happen. I just want to make sure that we're, we're going about it right. So my question for, for Ben, um, is painting brick on Village Hall. What are your thoughts on that?
My idea of a good idea? It's a very porous material and it's, that's, I, I, I believe that we had spoken earlier about using panels, using some sort of exterior grade material that we can mount to the side of the building and then allowing him to paint on that or whoever is chosen.
Deb?
But I'm not, I mean, I'm no expert. Don't, don't.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, painting, painting brick is always difficult. Um, Deb, what, has he commented at all about, um, graffiti or, um, does he, would he come back and paint over top of it if we needed him to? Or like, you know, what if someone vandalizes this?
I have not discussed that particular, um, issue with him. Um, all I can say is that the city of Buffalo and, and Western New York have exterior public murals that are applied to exterior surfaces, most of which are brick, concrete, et cetera. I do not have an answer for that.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's funny, even as I'm asking that question, I'm thinking about like, you know, there's, there's, yeah, there's several murals that I would argue are probably in a, a more susceptible area and they do seem to have a special designation, you know, they, they, uh, or, you know, people seem to steer clear of them from, from vandalizing them. But on the other hand, you would think the same of our, you know, crosswalk signs and benches in Glen Park too. And yet we find these things with all kinds of awful things printed on them. So, um, I guess I'm, my concern is not one that should stop the project, but one that I don't want it to be ruined because of. So like if we can, if there's something we can do, if, if he, maybe, I mean, there is, there are coatings that can be applied that, you know, make things more graffiti-proof. We paint that on some of our stuff, but I don't know if that's appropriate for brick, you know? You might know better.
I do that, um, if, if we ever did have a graffiti issue, we could probably hire him again to basically correct the graffiti issue, you know, paint it white and then touch it up or whatever.
Right.
We would just have to pay him for that.
I just, I just don't want this to become a burden for DPW in the long run. Because this is.
Agreed. Um, yeah, and I did ask that question to Deb when we first talked about the individual that, uh, the committee had found, about the application and all that, because I know that was one thing we had discussed, um, previously as a board, um, of using the panels and everything. So, um, uh, the one thing that we have actually changed due to pricing is that one thing we'll have to decide on, uh, as a board and, and the vote in a minute, is that we actually have enough funds to do the entire east wall. The first proposal that went around was, uh, just about half of it. So there are funds to do the whole wall. Uh, the reason that we in the committee, uh, decided to do the whole wall was now it's actually visible by Main Street as well. Whereas the, the half of it would only be the back half that you would see from the parking lot. So now as you drive down Main Street, you would notice clearly there's something on that wall. So, um, that's the other thing we have to consider, um, is are we okay with the whole wall? Me personally, I am, but, um, it's obviously board decision, so.
Well, I, I, that's, I like that too. I like that it's, it's visible. I like that it's, you know, accessible from both ends. I think it, you know, it, it lends, that lends itself to the fact that that park is so long and linear and it has sort of two different characteristics depending on your approach. It would be, it would help, you know, with that further, so.
I also will add that, um, the pocket park has become, uh, not only a place of rest from, you know, the busy Main Street noise, but it's become very popular for use for celebrations such as the, uh, holiday in, in the village, et cetera, where Candy Cane Lane, uh, in the winter, it's become, um, Ferry Lane during garden walks. It's popular with all of the visitors to Village Hall, patrons of the library, farmer's market. Saturday mornings, you'll find people sitting there enjoying their coffee, having a, uh, you know, a family gathering, uh, around the patio tables. So it is a place of celebration and that's what our, our whole thought process is, is to have an explosion of beautiful, to celebrate the beauty of nature in flowers and floral garden theme. And, um, they do, these murals do become very popular as photo ops, backdrops. People want to come. They want to take a selfie in front of these colorful, beautiful works of art. And that's what they are, works of art. So we would like to basically donate these funds to, uh, a major village project on Village Hall, which would be a celebration of public art, um, being the first one in the village.
So we're talking the entire hundred-foot length of the wall along Village Hall?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, originally, uh, we had just kind of thought of the rear part from behind the bronze statue going south to the southeast corner of the, of Village Hall. And why, and I said, why am I thinking only halfway? Because when he quoted the price, I go, oh my God, we do have that money, so let's do it. But, um, why not do the whole expanse of, of the wall from Main Street back? And so that the Main Street traffic and pedestrians, et cetera, would absolutely see it.
That's the entire height of the wall.
Yes, seventeen feet high, ninety-nine feet long. Now, we do have those, uh, what was holding me back thinking about it were the forsythia bushes.
Yeah, but we've talked, we're, we're yanking those at some point.
They're gonna be yanked. And I go, why am I letting forsythia bushes, you know, encroach on the idea of just half? What's gonna be on the other half, empty wall? When it could be the whole thing because we do have the funds for it.
And he's doing it all?
Yes, all by himself. And all he needs is a ladder. He does not need any lift or anything like that, that because of the height is, is manageable for him.
Does he paint houses too? Does he paint houses?
I think it means.
According to his detailed evidence that we asked him to submit, for the entire wall project, it would be, he's putting an eight-week, um, timeframe on it just to give himself enough time. Again, he would project the. Again, he would project the image onto the wall at night. He outlines it from the projection view. And then during the daytime, he would fill in with the paint.
As well, because I, we've talked about doing nature scenes and pollinators and all that and flowers and everything. And I asked her, and I think she's also asked as well, to tie in, maybe to have a picture of the falls worked into this too, because that's obviously part of the fabric of our village. So, so we will get a rendering and he didn't really say yes or no, I don't think, Deb, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
I don't think he really gave you a yes or no answer about the falls, but he has a vision and he'll give us a draft or a couple of options basically to choose from.
Yeah, the price includes, it's all inclusive. It includes labor, the cost of paint, his design work. He will give us several designs to look at. The price includes two revisions. And once it's approved, then it's, it's a go. I wish you had that PowerPoint presentation.
If I can share my screen, I started it.
Okay, because I included pieces of his, his actual work.
He shared on the screen, so bear with me for a second.
Okay.
Keaton, do you have to give me permission or do I just?
Yes, I do. I stopped the sharing when there were a couple incidents a little while ago with Channel 4. Hold on one second and let me bring that back.
Deb, while they're doing that, let me just say thank you for doing this. I think it's, you know, you guys are very passionate about what you do and you always come through with, you know, great product. So, you know, thanks for pursuing this and sticking with it. I'm sure it's going to be wonderful.
It is a passion, you know, and thanks to Ben and the guys.
To be able to now.
I'm glad you're going over time.
It's okay. It's important. Can you guys see, there we go. All right, so can you guys see the screen there? The Garden Gutter Way?
Yep.
All right. Deb, can you see it okay?
Yes, I can, yeah.
Let me get it back over.
When you look at that blank wall and you say to yourself, well, I say to myself, it's just begging. You know, it's begging for color, it's begging for art. Just, you know, beautiful, very restful, restful florals, flowers.
Pictures out, there you go.
Right, now this particular is, this is one of his pieces downtown. It's on the west side of the large picture. The one up in the right corner is on Elwood Avenue on the side of Half and Half Boutique across the street from Pano's. And as you can see, he specializes in florals and natural elements. On the right that we are, I asked him, I said, what, what is the we are? I didn't understand if he, you know, if he could tell us what, what that meant. And actually what he did was each one of those flowers is a flower from, one of, that represents the country of all of the different nationalities, the diverse, the diverse population on the west side. So it's a statement of we are, in other words, we are diverse. And he did it in a floral theme. So I said, boy, I love those flowers. It's colorful, it's pop, it's, of course, art is in the, in the eyes of the beholder. But his work is what, what we aspire to see. As you can see by his bio, he's also researching these kind of themes, which we, he and I both agree and my, my committee agrees, we love the soft look of these. I mean, they're absolutely gorgeous.
Ready for the next slide?
The next one. And this is the wall. Okay, we do have, I had him give us two options. Option one was $2,800 and that would have been from behind the bronze statue all the way to the south corner of the Village Hall. The other option is the $5,000 all inclusive, which would be the 99 foot expanse of just the flat wall. That will not include the wraparound and then over to the back corner of Village Hall. It will be solely at 99 foot by 17 foot high. Obviously he does not paint over the windows. The windows stay of course, unpainted, but they blend in to the, the art.
The 99 does not go all the way to the back edge? It just gets right to that triangular piece of concrete there?
The flat expanse that you can see in that upper left photo there, from there all the way to Main Street. And of course, and Ben also agrees that those forsythia, you know, are eventually going to come out. And Chris did say that he could even work by pushing, you know, kind of pushing those forsythia bushes back so that he could still work behind them. He's done this before. So, and unification members, we'd be willing to get in there and snip them back. We've done it before, so we can do it again.
We're good at taking things out.
I know, you're great. You guys are fantastic.
You know, don't hold your breath putting things back in sometimes.
All right.
If you have any questions, just, you know, I'll just stick around.
Thank you, Deb.
For all your work.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm excited. I thought it would take a lot longer. That's what, you know, I think when we were talking, we've talked about a mural for years. And I think a lot of the reason or hesitation, we didn't think it would work was mainly because we thought it's going to be a lot more than what it was. So I'm glad that, you know, you guys had raised all that fund and thank you all for all the hard work and that you've done for the past several years.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Hey, let's get started with our meeting. We're a little 15 minutes late. I want to welcome everyone to the Village Board Meeting for June 22nd, 2020. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deb Hayes.
Did she, did she say?
Yes, she did.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, never evil, just as. So I was just making sure you were listening, Deb. It's kind of like, you know, when you're in school and the teacher calls on you. Okay, Administrator Kindred, could you do the roll call please?
Mayor Rogers. Deputy Mayor Piazza.
He may have stepped away.
We'll come back.
I just asked him to unmute, so hopefully he gets the screen message.
Okay, trustee E2.
Here.
Trustee Yates. Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Attorney Chip Greco. We'll come back to him. Deputy Treasurer Pascoe.
Here.
Okay, DPW General Crew Chief Philanen.
Here.
Director of Community Development De Priest.
Here.
And Deputy Mayor Piazza. Beza? I know he was there.
Everything okay?
No, my, my, my computer keeps shutting out. Can I just listen through your phone?
We can hear him, but we can hear him, he's talking.
He should just join the audio.
So Beza's okay? He just lost, he just lost video. He's back now, but without video. No, maybe we lost him now. Well, I will, I'll call him back and I'll ask him to get back in. And we'll try that again because we obviously need him. So give me a moment and you guys can keep going.
Yeah, let's keep going. We have no proclamations this evening. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of June 8th, 2020. Anybody second?
Second.
I think I'll do.
I'll say, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll get into the public hearings. The first public hearing is for the continuation of the May 11th, 2020 public hearing on the proposed Parks Master Plan and Guidance Documents. So I'll make a motion to open that public hearing. And for those in the audience, if you would like to comment as it relates to that topic, please give us your name and address. And Keaton, I'm going to let you kind of get everyone in to comment.
And while we're waiting.
I just hit unmute.
Okay, we can hear you.
I'm not hearing a thing and nothing's happening.
And we can hear you, Beza. I was just going to say that, whoa. I was going to say that we did receive another email. Keaton forwarded me an email. Who is that from, Keaton?
I think it's Beza.
The email this morning?
No, about the Mark's Master Plan. I feel like it was, it was, yeah, I mean, it was a while ago, but I feel, it might have been Larry or.
It was, so it was an email from Larry Zazowski.
Thank you.
That's right, yeah, it was last week.
He just wanted to make sure that we were going to keep the public hearing open because he felt it was such a, there was a lot in your Parks Master Plan and he felt that it was important that the public be able to physically be present at the meeting in order to comment on it. So he just asked if we could keep it open. And I, I responded to him when he sent that. And I just said that trustee E2 had actually stated that early on that his, you know, his intention was to keep it open until we can get back to end meetings in person, so.
You know, something just dawned on me and, and I don't know, maybe this is worth pursuing, but I don't know that I could commit to every weekend, but maybe it wouldn't be such a bad idea if we had a table set up at the farmer's market with, you know, large scale prints of things.
It's a good idea.
That we could, you know, we could start to, you know, share it with the population more, you know, and point and shoot and actually have, you know, one-on-one conversations about stuff. It's not, again, it's still not the format that I would want this to be in, but it would be, it would be better than this.
Yeah, I like that idea a lot, Matt, so I think we should do it. Do you want to start? Is there anyone who wants to comment during the public hearing, Keaton?
Let's see, I will, sorry, I was still kind of working with Beza there. So anybody who would like to talk during this public hearing about picture of parks, please feel free to raise your hand or either do that or type a message in the chat box. Actually, we got a message from Ellie Grenauer to everyone regarding the farmer's market. We are limited to what we can set up at the market. You will need to reach out to Ellie to find out, so.
Why couldn't we just set up right behind Village Hall? There's plenty of room back there and then we wanted to.
I mean, right now what she's saying is that the State Department of Ag limits who we can have at the farmer's market. They don't want community gatherings for safety reasons. So they're trying to minimize a gathering of groups of people in one spot. So I think that's, she's just being cognizant of that. So, because we can't have kids tents and there's no fun this year.
Yeah, I figured it was going to be hard. I figured that idea was going to be harder to execute than it was to think of, so.
Yeah. But I'm not, I'm not saying the next couple of weeks, you know, as we move into different phases, that some of those mandates are lifted and we could find a place for you. Or it's basically grown to the point where we're now back into the library lot as well. So as more vendors show up, you wouldn't be on an island over in the Village Hall parking lot.
Right.
Right, so, so I would say let's play it by ear and maybe plan something out for a couple of weeks out. So that we can kind of notice and have people come out.
Okay.
All right.
Let's see, we also, well, Ellie just said we could make a volunteer tent and we could pass the information out. So we could do it that way. I was also thinking if we had, the TV in the conference room is so huge, but if we had access to a smaller TV, we could just put the presentation on loop. Whoever wants to kind of take a look at it could do that, you know, so.
Yeah, I think the, I think in that format, having larger scale, you know, form board on easels is more accessible. And then we could just have copies of the presentation printed out if people wanted to take, you know, paper.
Okay. We don't have anyone raising their hand or anything to ask a question.
Raise his hand. I think Dan physically raised his hand.
Yeah, Dan did.
Feel free to speak, Dan.
You're on mute, Dan.
I just asked you to unmute, Dan.
Good again, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I like the idea of doing some kind of a display with this park program. And I, and I think it ought to be posters on foam board two foot by 24 by 36 or 20 by 30 or something like that. And eventually, when we get back to normal, you can bring it to the Village Hall and put them up on the walls so everybody can look at it. Because right now, I mean, I look at that thing on a eight by 10 laptop screen and I can't figure out anything obvious. See trails and so on and so forth with it, but it needs a bigger presentation. So whatever you can do, the farmer's market or behind the Village Hall, that's fine. Idea. That's it.
Okay, anybody else who would like to speak? Please feel free to use the raise your hand function that's at the bottom of the screen. And just as a reminder, I'm going to put up on the screen that you can access, sorry, hold on one second. The full presentation that was given by trustee Matt E2 on May 11th can be accessed on the website in a, in an archive. You would just go to, you would just go to the archive of recorded meetings and then you can just click on whichever date you would like. If you'd like to watch the actual presentation, that was during May 11th. So that's all I wanted to add on that. We don't have anything else unless trustee E2 wants to add anything.
Nope, I make a motion to continue the public hearing till, I don't know when, forever.
Okay, so let's close off the remarks then. And we will just continue the public hearing till indefinitely and our next meeting is July 13th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next, I make a motion to open the second public hearing we have tonight, which is to amend the approval process for seasonal outside seating.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So any interested parties who would like to comment on seasonal outside seating, please state your name and address.
Well, shouldn't we say what we're proposing to do?
Oh.
Keaton, do we have the graph up the law?
No, actually I didn't get that. Julie, do you have, do you happen to have that?
I do, give me a minute.
Okay. If not, I do have the simplified version on.
Well, Judy.
What?
Well, Judy's looking for that. I can, I said, well, Judy's looking for that. I could, I mean, essentially, what the proposed amendment does is allow for the building department, the code enforcement officer, to process seasonal outdoor seating permit applications.
As opposed to it having to go to planning board.
Without enforcement officer, the ability to refer those to the planning board.
Yeah, I just kind of, I put a generalized statement of what Chip just said on the website, so.
And I can find it if, if you guys can.
Well, let's, let's start taking if there are any comments and hopefully get it up.
Okay, awesome.
So are there any comments? Anyone who would like to comment on that topic?
Anyone, please raise your hand using the raise your hand device and we'll take you one by one. Oh, we have Dan Ryder would, would like to speak.
Yeah, Dan Ryder, 38 Garden Parkway. I don't understand. Those who won't get it until we get the law read to us, the local law, but is the, is the board prepared to approve something tonight?
Well, I do have under my reports and resolutions, a resolution to adopt Local Law Number 10 of 2020, so it is under my resolutions.
But I, I think that would be a good idea to approve it because I've heard members of the board speak about vacancies along Main Street. Okay, it's been an ongoing problem for the past few years. I don't think we should increase that. Okay, I think we should do everything possible to avoid any more vacant. And I'll shut up until I hear the law.
Well, I mean.
Right now.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the law is, the law remains substantively unchanged. The big, the big red tape issue is that these, all of these applications go through the planning board. And so the proposal is to simply remove that step. Make it, make it a referral to the planning board at the discretion of the code enforcement officer. But that in general, since these are really just sort of, they tend to be more temporary and they have fairly prescriptive requirements, dimensional requirements, that there's no reason why the CEO can't, you know, make a judgment call on that.
Yep, that's it.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a very good idea. Okay, and, you know, every time you put another board in here, it's at least two weeks or a month. You don't need that. You need to open those places up and expand them right now.
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, anyone else? No chats and no raised hands.
Okay, so I will make a motion then to close the public hearing to amend the approval process for seasonal outside seating.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we will move into the suspension of rules for public participation and that is the time where you can speak or address any issue as it relates to the Village of Williamsville. We just asked that you give your name and address before you speak for our records and to try to keep your comments to under four minutes. So I'll make a motion to open the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Right. Would anyone like to speak? Please use the raise your hand function and/or use the chat box. This is going to be a rarity. We have nobody.
Don't jinx it, Keith.
We have Dan Ryder raising his hand.
I don't have to be first, okay? Nobody in front of me that I go first. Dan Ryder, 38 Garden Parkway. A couple of weeks ago, I asked for the village to look at the specifications for the media house and their seventeen-page specification on door hardware. Which he had dollar signs written all over it. Anyway, I see the plans have been amended. You can't read them because it got fuzzy on the computer, but I see there's alternates put in for door hardware. That's a good idea. I think it will allow the village to see what this is gonna cost and then make a decision. At least it cost identified in a competitive, thank you very much. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to use.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Good.
Anyone else?
Welcome.
No one else is asking.
I'll make a motion to close the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so we'll get into reports and resolutions. Keaton, I'll let you put that, yep, thank you.
Night, everybody. Bye.
Good night.
Aye.
Okay, so I will make a resolution to approve item, agenda items numbers one, two, three, and four as they appear on the agenda. They all have to do with budget transfers and amendments.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, resolution number five, there was a error on the, the top number, so it should match the bottom number, which is eight-five-three-zero-nine-five-point-eight-two. And other than that correction, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as it appears on the agenda.
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Resolution number six is to approve our bond resolution for 2020 road reconstruction with alternate and it's a very lengthy resolution, so I will make a motion to approve that as it appears on the agenda. But I would like crew chief Villanen to just kind of give a version of what road reconstruction we are actually doing.
Can I just say, Deb, when it gets to the vote, can we do a roll call vote?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is there a reason why you need to?
Because for the bonding, the attorney requested a roll call vote.
Okay, all right. So, crew chief Villanen, could you just give everyone who's in listening just an overview of what roads we're doing this year and crosswalks and everything?
Sure, we're going, starting on, I'll start from the north side headed west to east. North Long is getting done from Maine up to the village line. Glen Avenue is being done from Reist all the way to Mill. We've got Eagle is being done from Mill to Academy. We have Oak Grove from Hirschfield all the way to Maine as it makes its bend around and goes east to west and north to south. And then we have Castle Creek is the final road to be paved. And these are all mill and pave projects. Each crosswalk within the scope of work or within the bounds of those roads will receive new accessible ramps where needed, where they don't exist. We are adding two raised crosswalks in Glen Park along Glen Avenue and a rapid flashing beacon, pedestrian active, activated rapid flashing beacon similar to what is on Garrison at Park. And that is in conjunction with the Erie County PSAP program. Our grant funding through that program only got us one rapid flashing beacon, so our project is adding a second. So there will be those, those pedestrian safety measures in the, at the east and west parking lots to facilitate safe crossing of Glen Avenue. And then the raised crosswalk, similar to what's on Spring Street, will help to calm the cut-through traffic on that street. And that is the scope in its totality.
And are they raising rims, leveling rims, you know?
Aye. Yep, yep, we'll have, so as part of that, what we often typically do is add the stormwater and sanitary rim adjustments under our budget lines. So we'll, we'll procure the devices that are necessary to make those adjustments and we'll work with the contractor to, to do that in, of course, as necessary.
All right, thank you. So I will make a resolution to approve resolution number six as it appears in the agenda. And Minister Kendry, I'll do a roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Piazza? Oh, do we have a second on that?
Oh, second.
Al did.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Piazza? Yeah? I mean, Basil? Basil? He's on mute.
You're on mute. Oh, he's plumming up.
He's giving a thumbs up. Okay, trustee E2?
Yes.
Trustee Yates?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
And Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion passed, five to zero.
Okay, resolution.
So, can I just ask then, Judy, did you get a clarification on the, when we can start?
I'll get there tomorrow. I have not gotten that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Resolution number seven is in regards to the public hearing that we just held on the seasonal outdoor seating. Resolved that the proposed amendments to chapter 112-16J seasonal outdoor seating of the village code that was the subject of a public hearing on Monday, June 22nd, 2020, is hereby adopted as local law 10 of 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number eight is, I'm gonna read it because it has to do with our reorganization meeting and the election being rescheduled. Whereas the village board meeting scheduled for the official village year is approved at the annual reorganization meeting, which usually falls on the first Monday in July. However, due to COVID-19 and the postponement of the village election until September 15th, 2020, and the reorganization meeting postponed until the first Monday in October, now therefore be resolved that the regular board meetings of the Village of Williamsville Board of Trustees until the reorganization meeting on October 5th, 2020, will be held at 7:30 on the following Mondays with work session beginning at 6:00 PM as listed below. Our next meeting is Monday, July 13th, 2020, Monday, July 27th, 2020, Monday, August 24th, Monday, September 14th, and Monday, September 28th, all 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So now I'm gonna make a motion to go off agenda to put forth a resolution to make an amendment to chapter 47. And the said amendment would be, I would like to call for a public hearing at our July 13th meeting to hear all residents' opinions or ideas on revising chapter 47 to allow for a property homeowner to deny any type of historic designation on their property. So do I have a second to go off agenda and put forth that resolution? No second? Can I, can I just make a general comment? I'm, I'm a little disappointed that this board doesn't want to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on, you know, are you, are you just scared that maybe the public will weigh in too much and you'll be too pressured? Or I'm just, like, why not even let it out there? Let's have an open discussion and see where it lands.
I feel like we did have an open discussion.
Well, we didn't. I mean, that's what a public hearing is for, is for actually calling it, making an announcement, a notice, putting it in the paper, putting it online, and noticing the public that, hey, we're about to make a decision one way or another here. So to just shut it down and cut it off at the pass, I think is just a great disservice to the constituents that we serve, so. So I'll ask again, can I, can I get a second to go off agenda and put forth this motion? Resolution, no?
I think we, didn't we, we discussed it tonight and, you know, for me, you know, I, I mean, I think it would be reckless for us to consider getting rid of CLG and that's what we have to do if, if we felt that's what we needed to do. And I thought we discussed it tonight.
Well, we did amongst the ten people who were on the Zoom call. So I'm talking about opening up to a broader spectrum of village residents by putting forth, you know, a call for a public hearing.
Yeah, but we also put it to a straw vote and four out of the five voices were opposed to sacrificing the CLG status. So pursuing any alterations to the chapter 47 preservation code would do just that. So why would we be motivated to pursue that public hearing?
Well, why not? Just to see what, see what the outcome is. Maybe we'll all learn something new during the outcome of a public hearing. I mean, do you, do you know everything there is to know about CLG? Are you like a certified expert on it?
No, not by any stretch of the imagination.
Neither am I, but I'd be interested in hearing what the general.
That's not what, but that's not the purpose of your public hearing.
No, it is the purpose of a public hearing. That's the exact purpose. It's to notify people that we are having a discussion and we are going to come to one conclusion or another at the end of that public hearing. But it's giving people an opportunity that is much wider than what we did tonight.
Well, but your public hearing is proposing an alteration to the local law, which we hasn't, which hasn't been written and we haven't read. So we, you know, what are we, what are we having a public hearing on? The, the idea of an alteration to a public, to a, to a current law. We have no language to review.
Well, we do. The, the language to review is a revision to chapter 47, not local law.
I know, but what, what is that, what is that revision going to say? Put it in writing.
I can put it probably in writing in one sentence that, and, you know, Chip could clean it up with legalese, but basically, you know, if I'm a homeowner and I have my, either my whole property or a wall or a fixture designated as a historic landmark, that if I choose not to accept that designation, that the buck stops there with the historic preservation of that.
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand your point. We're, we're in the middle of a, we're in the middle of a public meeting. So my question would be, how long do you get to wait for, for a second?
I'm gonna follow you.
If, the public can also re-watch the recording from tonight where there was a lot, for me, there was a lot of great information about CLG and our HBC and everything. So if, if there was a resounding amount of people who were definitely interested in revisiting this from the public after watching the video from tonight, then yeah, let's bring it back up again. But I mean,
That's, that sounds fair. So I'm not gonna, you know, I don't want to waste time here belaboring this. So I don't have the support for it and that's fine. And we can just certainly move on to the rest of the agenda, so. Okay, so next for his reports and resolutions is trustee Murphy.
Thank you, mayor. So I have no resolutions tonight. As for reports, traffic and safety, we met on a Zoom, forgetting the exact date, but it was like the second Thursday in July's or June, it was a couple of weeks ago on the 11th. And they were discussing about the possibility of making the, apologize if I get the directions wrong, but the east side of Reece Street, a no parking zone from basically the bend in Reece as it goes towards Union back up to Glen. Make that all no parking on, again, on the east side of the road, because there has been some incidences of people parking. There were hindrance to backing out of driveways. So they were gonna form a recommendation to let us know what they kind of thought about that. I don't know if Bennett, they had a chance to talk to you yet about taking some measurements of the road or not. Basically, to see where the curve kind of starts and where an appropriate point for no parking zone would start. So there's discussions about that. There was also discussions about speeding on Mill. It's kind of the alterations that may be possible to slow down traffic besides just putting up a stop sign at Mill and Glen. So there's some good discussions of that. Again, they were gonna put together some recommendations to let us know their exact recommendations. So there's some good discussions of that. Again, they were going to put together some recommendations to let us know their exact recommendations. So beyond that, there's no other reports I have.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Murphy. Next for his reports and resolutions is Trustee Deputy Mayor Piazza.
Basil?
Basil.
You're muted again.
Go with hand signals.
There you go.
We can hear you.
Okay, basically I have nothing. I just have a cabinet that, that Yale, I just want to follow. Yale, can you hear me okay? Did you have a chance to contact the Art Culture Committee that are, are also working on a similar project?
A mural for the DPW building?
Yeah, I, I'd ask you to give a call to the folks on the Art Culture Committee and let them know what you're doing.
Sure. Yeah, I can reach out to the chair, the chairwoman of that committee as well, let them know. You're talking about letting them know we're doing a mural?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, that's, that's it. I have nothing else.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Piazza. And next for his reports and resolutions is Trustee.
Thank you, Mayor. Beautification, if you haven't noticed, as, as they always do, has done a great job of getting a lot of plants in the ground. It's been really hot recently. So we appreciate that and thank all those members for keeping us beautiful as well as they do. And DPW is finally back at work. So they'll probably be putting a mulch as they get around, get caught up and everything. So we should have to be patient for that to happen, but we are moving ahead. And in a few minutes, we'll hopefully adopt a resolution to the first mural in the village on village hall. So that's beautification. WBA, I was not able to jump on the Zoom call, but I'm speaking with Mr. De Priest. Basically, they're open to ideas. Worked with the trustee E2 on putting together some plans for either parks. If we want to try and do movie nights to try to attract people into the, the village safely and to work with our business community to try to help them out through this process. So that will probably not be till at, at least late, the earliest late July, probably even August before we could potentially do something. So, but we are trying to work with our business community and help them to recover from what we've all been through. Tree Board hasn't met, but we got about trees a couple of weeks ago at the first farmers market. So I know it's there. EAC is looking to start meeting again via Zoom. So I'm trying to get them on the docket in the next few weeks. So with that being said, I'm going to modify the, 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 the resolution, my Yates, number one, to actually do the entire wall. And if we can call in the question, if anybody has an objection to that, then we can obviously modify this down. But whereas that the beautification committee would like to hire local artist Chris Piantowski to paint a mural with a floral theme on the south facing wall.
Should be east.
East facing wall of village hall along the pocket park. Though the past few years of the village garden walk, the beautification committee has collected sponsor fees and held a raffle of WBA donated items to fund beautification projects around the village to fund this project. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board of trustees approves the mural for the village hall at the price not to exceed $5,000 with the village board to have final approval of the rendering prior to the artist beginning his work. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I, I was muted. I second.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So I think we've got the whole wall ladies. Nice work. And I'm personally really excited about this, you know, as I said earlier. We've talked about a mural for several years now and I think everyone thought it would be way too expensive for any of us to undertake on our own. And this garden wall committee is fierce and they put together their money, save their money. So all the funds are all from fundraising. There's not, there's no taxpayer dollars that are coming out of this. It was all donations. So thank you guys for the garden walk and thank you to the board for supporting this and I'm really looking forward to this. That's all I have, Mayor.
Next for his reports and resolutions is Trustee E2.
Um, I have no resolutions this evening. My only report is to say that we've gotten maybe about a dozen volunteers through our Facebook solicitation for participants in the Island Park Playground Steering Committee and/or Build Day. I just sent an email to Keaton. Who's going to pass that out to those who have already responded, doing a bit of a poll for, you know, what their specific interests might be in the volunteering. The steering committee would be responsible for doing just that, steering the, the, the build day effort. Each individual would be assigned a particular role and be responsible for making sure that, you know, all the tools are there, all the foods there, whatever might be the case. And then kind of subsequent to that, the build day would be scheduled at their first meeting. It would, their meetings would occur, you know, basically every two weeks or so, starting July 6th through the end of August, depending on how frequently we actually need to meet. But the, the hope is that the build day would be probably the second, you know, like middle of September sort of period of time, second Saturday. And on the build day, our architects has told me that they recommend 100 volunteers from 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM. So get the word out, we're looking for bodies to show up and participate. We'll, we'll have someone on the steering committee who will be in charge of taking, you know, collecting volunteer names and whatnot along the way. But everybody is welcome, kids, adults, knitting clubs, whatever you got. We need all the bodies we can get. So that's it for now.
All right. Thank you, Trustee E2. Staff reports, Administrator Kendron.
Just listening to Matt talk about looking for volunteers for the park. What about putting like a volunteer box at the park itself, explaining what we're looking for and as people walk in, maybe they'll see it and be like, oh, I could do that. And they could, there could be a sign up paper or something that they throw in a box, some kind of.
Yeah, you're getting a lot of traffic in that park right now. I'm telling you, man. During the day, you've got school groups and toddler meetup groups and all kinds of people who I think would use the facility. You know, might get a, might get a help turning a wrench or whatever it takes on build day.
I, I think that's a great idea and I think we should plan on doing that as soon as we have a date. Cause then I can, then we can put up a, a thing there with the picture of what it's going to be. Say volunteer for build day on such and such a day, put your name in the box.
Yeah. When are we going to know this date?
After the first meeting. So the meeting will be scheduled like the week of the sixth. And they'll pick the date right then, that night. And you can be part of that conversation if you want to be.
Yeah, yeah, we, we talked about it. All right, just try to game plan. It's all.
This is really helping this get, kind of like what we did over at Garrison years ago. Is that correct, Matt?
Yep, same thing. Yeah, but on a much bigger scale. The Garrison, you know, in order of magnitude, the Garrison Park toy, I think was something like $50,000, $60,000. This is over $200,000 worth of equipment and labor.
So we need 100 bodies that can come help.
Yep.
Yep. All right.
Hey Matt, one more question on this topic. Have you thought about maybe holding that first meeting at Island Park, perhaps in the pavilion? It's open air. You know, you could use, you could use the microphone and Bluetooth speaker.
Spectacular idea. I, I hadn't even gotten that far. But that's, that's a good suggestion. Yeah.
And so what's the status of that Sam Grant? Any updates, Keaton?
Um, we submitted it officially last week, last week, Monday. After Matt, mostly Matt, a little bit of help from Ben and myself kind of sent it, sent it back after they had some, some concerns and, you know, you know, the state, they want not 100% information, they want 110. So we gave them everything we had and now we're going to review it. So should hear everything on it, you know, in a few weeks, hopefully by mid-July, late July. So.
All right, thanks. Okay, Crew Chief Villanen, anything to report?
No, we're moving ahead with our tree plantings. I'd like to implore the residents of the village, if you are getting a new tree planted in front of your house, to water it. We're providing water bags with them. We will be going around on a weekly basis to keep those waters. It's not the ideal time to plant, but if we have them, we got to get them in the ground. And as far as the kind of follow-up on the beautification, we're going to start hitting, hitting the weeds now before we can mulch. So that's our, our next task, our major task here. And that's about it for now.
Community Development Director De Priest?
Um, I actually, I have nothing, nothing else to add at this time. So thank you.
Deputy Treasurer Pasco?
Nothing to add.
Attorney Greco?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, that should cover everyone. We have no executive session. We will adjourn this meeting, but we need to go back into our work session and pick up where we left off. So I'll make a motion to adjourn the board meeting of June 22nd, 2020.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's get back into work session. Keaton, I think we left off with the format logistics of future board meetings at village hall.
Yeah, I started, I started a list earlier of things that we might need to kind of talk about when we get back into village hall meetings. Can everybody see this Word document that I started?
Yep.
Okay. So I thought we'd just kind of go through this real quick, see what everyone's expectations are. Because, you know, as I told Judy this afternoon when we were talking, you know, we don't want anyone to be caught off guard. You know, if, if we need some help from DPW or whatever, you know, you know, we, we just, it'd be good to know upfront. So I mean, you know, I'm just throwing things out there and if anybody has anything to add, please do. You know, just throwing this out there, should meetings be moved to the meeting house until further notice? That does allow us a little bit more space. Village hall limits, you know, do we want to limit that to rear entrance only for, for people? Do we need to cordon off areas of the hallways? Just, so just some things to kind of consider there, you know? I guess we could take that first question, you know, do, do we need to think about moving to the meeting house?
Well, let me, let me just offer that I have spent the better part of the last two weeks setting up my office's reopening plan. And it is a massive pain in the butt. But everything that is written in the guidelines is refers to movement of people, limiting of contact and to the largest extent possible, limiting shared air. There was actually something on NPR over the weekend about how contacts transmission is actually a very, very, very low way of transmitting this disease. But that the, that sharing air is the primary concern. So I would say the meeting house would not be a good choice because it's one way in, one way out. Yeah, there's that back door, but that stair is kind of sketchy and whatnot, late at night and whatever else. It would probably be better if we could work it out logistically. And obviously for handicap people, it's a different animal. But if it could be worked out logistically where we had a one way in, one way out at village hall. So that everyone's coming in the back door and leaving through the front door, whatever might be the case. And it's all one way traffic in the hallway to the greatest extent possible. You know, we don't have massive attendance at our meetings. Even digitally, we have had fractional attendance at our meetings. So I don't really think we have the need for high volume per se. I, I would think that the village hall boardroom should be able to suffice for the quantity of public attends to join us.
Well, I think if we don't have any hot topic public hearings, it'd be okay.
Well, right, exactly. I mean, that's going to be the, that'll be the outlier.
What, what is the capacity of village hall?
The auditorium? What's the capacity there, Judy?
I, I honestly don't know.
I mean, does it have to be, you know, do it be under 50% or 25%? Or is there a percentage of the acceptable, acceptable people in there?
Well, right now, only 25 people or less can gather.
Right.
In one space. So.
Socially distanced.
Exactly.
Well, and although frankly, I mean, this is one of the difficulties you face as a municipality is there really, you fall into gray areas in a number of places with respect to these things. So right now, the limit is no, non-essential gatherings of, of more than 25 people. There, it is still not clear whether a public meeting of a governmental entity is considered an essential meeting or a non-essential gathering. So it's not entirely clear that that number applies to a, a village board meeting, for instance. But what is clear, I think, is that, is that however many people are in attendance, there should be those things that Matt was just talking about and also just appropriate distancing. I mean, I think if, if the, the board gets to a point where it decides it wants to or no longer has the authorization to meet remotely and therefore can only meet in person, then it's going to need to, to have these, some of these policies in place or procedures in place to make sure that, that it's safe. But the other challenge that the village faces is there is no specific guidance for municipal municipalities to follow. Like my firm is, we have our safety plan too, now that we're going back, but we're in office and there's guidance for offices. And same with Matt's office, they're all your places of employment or many of your places of employment. Local governments unfortunately right now are left to sort of cobble together appropriate, you know, is this an office setting? Well, then we'll use the office guidance and then the DPW is maybe a different creature. And so it, it is, you know, unfortunately, there, there's not really clear guidance for us to follow that's specific to, there is no guidance, for instance, on how to run a public meeting, governmental public meeting in this day and age after those meetings are occurring in, in person again. So we can only draw from generally applicable policies and other things that appear to be relevant. But it does, it does make it a challenge. But so I, what I would record, would suggest is how, again, whatever room you use and however you set it up, I just, you need to make sure you're controlling the spacing of people. And you certainly can require masks to be worn. And, 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 and other things like that. But the, the other thing we have to keep in mind is right now, this meeting could have been held, but for the public hearings could have been legally been held in person under the current executive orders. But public hearings cannot be. And that may change with zero notice, because that's the way these orders have been coming out. We don't know how much longer that, right now, except to the first week of July, that, that you're even going to be authorized to hold meetings this way. That may get extended, it may not get extended. And we may not find out until, till right beforehand. So these are great questions to be asking, but the biggest caution I have is be prepared to, to change on a dime if, you know, an executive order comes out the day before a planned meeting, because that's just sort of the way things have been going.
Well, so I guess, you know, the cobbling together guidelines, you know, one of the things that's required in the office is, you know, there's gotta be cleaner signage everywhere. I know we already have that up. There has to be reminder spacing of of six-foot centers. So for instance, if we have, if we have people coming in the back door and we have to have a health screening at the entrance to the boardroom, then we have to have someone who's staffing that health screening, asking those three screening questions, taking that temperature, and then the person that's waiting in line behind them has to be six feet, 12 feet, 18 feet. And that puts them down the stairs and that puts them out the door. Or are they all coming in the front door? Because at least we have some hallway to work with. And then if they don't get past the screener, they go out the back door, you know. But in that hallway, there has to be demarcus, you know, tape on the ground or, you know, spray paint or something that says six-foot centers down the length of that corridor.
There is tape.
Is there? Okay.
Yes.
I mean, I think for me, I, I think we're just gonna meet remotely as long as we're allowed to by, you know, New York State mandate. And then once, and, and, you know, we can sit here and talk about this all night and I really don't want to, because I think that, you know, i- it's gonna change on a dime, just like we saw with the outdoor seating went from, you know, phase three to phase two. And, you know, we're just gonna have to be nimble and, you know, we're just gonna have to deal with it quickly when it comes. But I think, you know, I'm comfortable just meeting remotely and until I'm told otherwise and, you know, we've got some things in place already and we'll just kind of go with that.
I, I would tend to agree with that. I don't, you know, this format has been very good.
Again, in two weeks. I mean, it's like change, it'll change maybe even overnight. So I don't, I don't want to just belabor, it's all common sense stuff, it's mask, it's hand washing, it's hand sanitizer at the door. You know, it's, it's six feet apart, it's taped in the hallways, all of that is already in place at village hall, so.
Right.
So let's just kind of, unless there's something else, let's kind of just move on to the next thing, so we're not here too late tonight.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and I, I, that's, I think, totally sensible. I mean, obviously, again, we, we're gonna have to prepare to be nimble, but I, but I do think it's, it's good to start thinking about these things. And in addition to the things, I mean, like you say, Mayor, a lot of it is common sense and there is guidance that we can pull from there. But one thing I think we're, we are going to have to think about in case it happens is, is a procedure in place, we may need the Amherst Police to assist in that if, for people who simply refuse to comply with those requirements. So we should be, make sure we're prepared to handle that eventuality as well, because obviously private businesses are seeing that and other people are seeing that, where, you know, some people just don't believe it's appropriate to tell them to, you know, wear a mask or do certain things that they don't want to do.
Right, and I think that, you know, we actually have a luxury, because when we do meet in person, we have an Amherst Police officer at all of those meetings. Most private businesses don't have one. So I think that, you know, that will be, you know, a step up that we have on that and, you know.
I'm gonna just kind of email this to everybody that way, it's out there. And then if anybody thinks of anything, we can just kind of add to it and keep it kind of a living document kind of thing, you know. I don't really like that phrase, but it can be a document that we can change along the way over the next week or so. And, you know, if anybody thinks of anything, Matt, especially if you've been working like that with your office, there are any tips or anything like that, just throw them on this document and then Judy, myself, and Ben and everyone else at village hall will know exactly what needs to be done should, and executive order, like Chip said, just kind of change on a dime. Great.
Okay. Old Business, I just had that cable franchise agreement after our last discussion. I know Chip emailed Mark and you kind of redlined some of the questions and he said he would just get back to us. So we don't have anything back from them, they're, the ball's kind of in their court at this point and we're just waiting to hear something. So we'll just keep that on under Old Business until we get to where we need to with that.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything since, since his initial acknowledgement. So the ball is definitely in their court.
All right, so Basil, do you have anything you want to discuss under Work Session?
Muted.
There you go. Awesome.
Why don't I say this? Anyway, that's what I said, I hear nothing.
Okay. Moving on then.
You gotta work on your sign language or something.
Matt, you have a couple of things on Work Session. I know we talked about maybe the first one a little bit, but.
Yeah, I already touched that one, the report. Wanted to circle back on the Elica Creek wall at 26 mil quickly. So this was the Ganges property with the damaged wall. And I saw your email, thank you, Deb. I, I reached out to Erie County Soil and Water, who is an organization, you know, in the county that works with properties that relate to creeks and stream beds and things of this nature, primarily agricultural, but, but anybody who touches a stream, you know, could potentially benefit from them. There might be grant money available through their programs, things like that. So in an attempt to try to help facilitate something for the Ganges that, you know, might be beyond, you know, a private resident, they, the, the regional director was willing to meet me out there, Ben was there with me, Philip Ganges. They took a look at the wall and their comment was, as I think we had all sort of felt it sort of generically, but their comment was that it was really, it is a maintenance issue that they, you know, really should benefit from finding a mason who's crazy enough to do the work for them from the creek side. But they also acknowledged that, you know, Ganges are not alone, that they are one of many property owners who own this old wall along that side of the creek, including Touch of Brass and Doug Shutey, you know, out behind Creekview and things like that. So we, he did take a look at it. His comment was unfortunately that all of their grants relate to water quality. If we were having a serious erosion problem, if there was, we were silting up the creek, things like that, there would be an opportunity for potentially even a public-private partnership where we could apply for grant money, you know, and try to assist all these property owners. We could try to dovetail that into our LWRP process as well, which I talked to Wendy Salvati very briefly and she indicated that while she was aware of the problems, they're all on public, private property and they're, it's not really a, you know, public funding issue. So the only other question that came up, and obviously we were talking to one property owner who, you know, was maybe in favor, maybe not of this idea, but there is an irregularity, I think, that we all found out about with this problem, is that there are historic properties that extend full width of the creek, which is an anomaly. And, you know, I guess the question is, is there, you know, is there interest in the idea of attempting to acquire those properties and put them back into the public realm, that portion of the property? Keeping in mind that, you know, the Ganges and their neighbors are actually paying property taxes on the stream bed. And that, you know, we could those portions of those properties back into the public realm, so that this weird shared ownership issue is resolved. And/or we can, we could, you know, depending on how one locates the property line, you could locate the base of the wall, you could locate the back of the wall, you could, we could write easements to gain access for maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. But the point is, is that Glen Park is actually eligible for CDVG money. And if those walls on that side of the creek were actually part of the park, or at least proximate to the park, then their repairs could actually be financed through that program as well, which the private property owners do not have the access to.
So I guess my question would be, when you, when you say acquire, are we talking like a dollar would be the sale fee for acquiring it, like we did the meeting house? Because arguably, I mean, there's considerable expense that is going to have to be put forth to have that wall repaired. So it's not per se, you know, it isn't really doing the village taxpayers a whole lot of good by, I guess, you know. So what is the benefit for us to acquire that property? So if I'm being, you know.
I genuinely, I genuinely don't have a great answer for that question.
Quite honestly, I mean, the Ganges are, I'm sure, you know, would be happy to unload this, this burden, but then if we, the village, acquire that, I'm certainly, I certainly wouldn't acquire it for more than a dollar.
Well, right.
And then secondly, you know, we, I think we need to put together like a cost analysis of what us acquiring that would mean for the, the repair work that needs to be done. And do get CDVG money for Glen Park, no doubt, but, you know, it's kind of a drop in the bucket maybe for some of that wall work? I mean, I, I just.
Well, it is, you know, it, it's a, it's a very good point, because what's, what's weird about it, so, you know, Phil, Phil did say, you know, in, you know, sort of in a flippant sort of way, yeah, I'd sell it to you for, for a dollar, whatever, you know, it's not doing me any good. But the, the flip side of that is while it will be a, probably a hefty financial burden for the Ganges and their neighbors and whatnot along the way, it's potentially possible that flipping the ownership of that and then putting it under the public realm could potentially have the effect of exponentially increasing the cost of the repair, because now it's not a private homeowner hiring, you know, Mike Pigeon to go out there and do it on the small. Now we're doing it at prevailing wage and things like that, so.
Good old prevailing wage, that'll, that'll get you every time on a.
Right, I mean, it's gonna triple the cost, right, for the same work and, and.
You know, you're being, you're being generous, triple, probably like, you know, quad, quadruple the cost of it.
Exactly, right. So now, so to that end though, Ben did reach out for them to Mike Pigeon and Mike is gonna, you know, was at least agreeable to going and take a look at it for him. Apparently, he's done the work for the Shooties as well, so. I, I think at this point, it's, it's really sort of a, it's a longer view question of is it, is it even worth poking that bear at this point or any point in the future? Or do we just let it ride? And what responsibility do we have or can we have for future blowouts and conditions that exist? Or we just, do we just maintain the role of facilitator and hope for the best? So that's all I wanted to say. What was next on my thing there?
You have South Lawn rezoning and landscape code rewrite under Old Business.
Right, that, those are both for Chip. I can see his eyes already lit up.
Oh, so the South Lawn rezoning, actually Deb, Mayor, you'll be getting some paperwork to sign and to effectuate the deeding of the properties to ourselves. You're gonna be, the village is deeding these one parcel into three parcels to itself. Those forms are all just about ready to go. Unfortunately, because we've been working on this so long, my colleague who prepared them, had them all set up for, to be signed by Dan Delano. So I had to send them back to get redone with your name.
We called Dan back for that one.
So once we, once we record though, once you get those signed, we will record those and then we will have new SBL numbers generated, the town will do that and assign them to the new lots.
Okay, so I, I need like a refresher course on this, because this was like, two years ago, we started talking about this.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So what's going on over there and why are we doing it?
I'll let me answer that. I, I'll answer that. Hang on a second, I just wanna see if I can find the, the picture that I want to show you.
Cliff Notes version, please.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
You know, that yellow book that you used to get in college?
Yeah, you can't get them anymore.
How old we are.
Yeah. Let's see. Of course, there's nothing in it. All right, well, all right, so here's the, here's the Cliff Notes version. So part of the rezone, the proposed rezoning of South Lawn Park, to get it out of the, whatever it's in now, MU, NMU. Or R3M, whatever the hell it is currently. We discovered that. Yeah, we discovered that the DPW property and Village Square Lane are actually all part of one contiguous parcel that is the north side of South Lawn Park. So that the road doesn't actually have a dedicated right-of-way. It's all just one big property that sticks up all the way along DeBolio, all the way up to, to Main Street. So we had the whole property surveyed. We proposed two property line revisions. One that would carve off the DPW property off the north side of Village Square Lane and then defining a new southern property line for Village Square Lane to establish a proper 50-foot right-of-way. And then everything from there south remains as it is, as part of South Lawn Park. So that's what Chip's talking about, about deeding ourselves our own properties, is basically we're just defining three separated properties out of one. The reason for doing, the primary reason for doing this one is.
We're subdividing.
Right. We're subdividing one big property. So, but the reason to do this is that we can now rezone South Lawn Park, the actual park, without sub-rezoning the DPW property. Which is currently mixed-use and theoretically a desirable property that someday we'll get millions of dollars for that will finance the relocation of our DPW to some mythical, magical floating island of a, you know, property. So. So.
You're so funny.
Yeah, so, so that's what we're, that's what we're doing. And so that's all in preparation for the proposal to rezone those properties into, into just like, I think, I don't know, I think it was R3, whatever the neighborhood was.
So the park, South Lawn.
Whatever, whatever the neighborhood is, I don't remember either. But the other thing, in addition to then, this subdivision and the filing and getting the SBL numbers, just so we can accurately describe what's being zoned what, we also need to update the zoning map, which is in, you know, unfortunately, you know, it was in Microsoft, the consultant prepared it back in 2013 or whatever it was. And it's in publisher format and it's not something, so Matt, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that to see whether you can actually.
I've never seen the, I've never seen the file. Judy was, Judy, did you find that?
I did not. Ben, were you gonna check with the town?
Say again?
Were you gonna check with the town on that map, the zoning map? Or was it something Brian did?
Oh, geez. Yeah, I did ask, well, I'm, yeah, now I'm recalling the conversation. Yeah, I guess I'll follow up and, and talk with the town to see if we can get that. I, I was told to talk to planning and I guess I punted that off in your direction, but I'll, I'll pick it back up and, and run with it.
Okay, so I, I'm happy to make the edits. I mean, I have, I have publisher at home, so I can easily make the edits.
You just need the file and I, that's.
Right, right.
I don't know where that is, so Brian doesn't have it. Can't find it.
And unfortunately, I can't locate a native version of it either. I just don't know what. Did I even check with Linda?
No.
It's in the village Cosmo somewhere.
I, I mean, I found the map on our server, but we don't have the native copy of it.
Yeah, it's just PDFs, right?
Yeah.
Which we. So, so we need the native to, to edit it, or we need to create a new one.
So I just, I just, the, the park itself, South Lawn Park, is going to be rezoned, whatever that R3 is that those houses going up on South Lawn are, is that correct?
No.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll match the neighborhood.
That's what I, so whatever the neighborhood is zoned, that park will be zoned.
Yep.
And, and is the idea behind that was that the current zone? And, and is the idea behind that was that the current zoning would have actually allowed for a development, could have allowed for some type of development in South Lawn Park? Because the park was never actually like a dedicated park according to.
No, no.
Right?
No, no, it's, no, it's, it's a dedicated park, no, that, that parkland would need to be alienated before you, anybody can do anything with it.
So I'm just trying to get, like, when people ask, why we're rezoning that, like, is that? I, I don't have a good answer right now.
Right, so the under, the underlying rationale for this, for this approach is, is twofold. One, um, it starts the process of moving towards an established open space zoning specifically for green spaces in the village, which is something that was in the comp plan as a recommendation.
Yeah, it's one of the comp plan recommendations that still haven't been acted on, so that.
Two, um, one of the reasons why the entire land swap original concept came into being was that the north half of South Lawn Park is actually a mixed use zoning. So it's, it is potentially desirable property that was considered by previous boards as sacrificial becau- and desirable to a developer to lure in the potential for that land swap, that alienation, that whatever. And because it's mixed use, high density, high, you know, development, that was why it was, it was desirable and in easily to, easy to market, right? So the, the Parks Committee, and I think to a greater extent even the, the, you know, com- plan really tries to discourage board members and future board members from the idea of marketing away our green spaces. And so the idea of down zoning this to an R3, which is effectively just a single family residential neighborhood zoning, makes it significantly less desirable to sell for future purposes.
That's what I was, that's what I was kinda saying, but I, okay.
Right, trying to, trying to take it out of, take it out of the high density realm, so can you guys see my screen?
No.
Oh.
I can see you.
Oh.
I think Keaton would need the.
Can you un?
I mean, I, I, I understand it now, I, I understood it before, but I just seen it because it was, it was ages ago we talked about it.
Yep, yep, so, so this would include, this would include not just South Lawn Park, but also, um, International Chimneys parcel on, um, South Lawn. All of the depot and Lehigh Trail and the triangle that you guys are, you know, eyeing for the dog park. Basically, everything that isn't Natale property. As well as the zombie house and the parcel immediately adjacent to that on South Lawn.
Right, so are we in, um, have we had any feedback like from International Chimney? Because are we, are we kind of maybe perhaps like, you know, with this downsized affecting maybe that property value over there? Or is that not an issue?
It's not an issue for me.
Well, I'm asking Chip. Like, you know, if we're taking, because you know, my whole understanding of the Natale site and you know, if I'm wrong at any point, jump in and correct me, um, was that there was only so much, um, downsizing that could be done on that property, being that it was a commercial property. Um, and when Darling went ahead and sold it to Natale with us, with, you know, like the density that everybody was up in arms about in the neighborhood, that there was really no way around that density because the village could have risked getting a lawsuit thrown at it if we downsized it too much, or something along those lines, but.
What, I, I, I wouldn't, there was definitely some concern by some board members that if it was down zoned too far, that, 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 that we could, the village could be sued. And of course, the village can always be sued for anything. So, but I don't know what, I, I don't think that has any bearing on anything that we're doing now. The only thing that's being rezoned as part of this, or for the most part, is Villa Joan property.
Right, but the International Chimney is as well, is that correct?
It, it is, but it's the anomaly, right? So when you look at the, when you look at the zoning map that's proposed, it would be a finger in the middle of a residential district, it doesn't make any sense.
I, I understand that, but I guess my question is, is was, is International Chimney aware of this rezoning? Um, and you know, is there a reason that perhaps we should notify them that we're, you know, at a crossroads here where we're considering, you know, rezoning them to that R3M?
No, no, R3.
R3.
R3, not M.
R3, so I, I guess, you know, I just, I don't want us getting slapped with a lawsuit, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I can't tell you that some property owner might not, but all I can say is I don't believe th- this zoning change was consistent with the comp plan. It's part of a larger process, I, I don't think there would be a realistic prospect of a successful lawsuit against the village for that, but you know, that doesn't mean somebody wouldn't get upset and try to sue you.
Well, sure, I know, and I'm just asking, like, if, if they're aware of us rezoning.
Yeah, that I don't, I, I, I don't, no, I mean, there's.
Like, I, I thought we sent letters, like when we're rezoning something, we said, or something comes. Do we not send letters out to like, you know, neighboring properties or properties that are affected by it?
Do, and the village may have done that, the village, nothing in New York state law or the village code requires that necessarily, we're required to publish notice, um, of public hearings, but certainly the village can do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, if I'm the one signing off on that paperwork, I would just feel a little bit more confident about that sign off if I knew for a fact that the one business that's in between that whole parcel is, is put on, you know, is notified of what we're doing prior to us doing it, not after the fact.
Because they're going from, they're going from MU to R3?
Correct.
Yeah.
And for the record, if you're not signing off on anything, Deb, you'd be one vote of five.
Well, no, Chip just said I'm signing, the papers are gonna be coming across my desk.
You're signing the papers to, to deed.
To deed the property, that has nothing, that has nothing to do with their property. That has to do with the subdivision of the village's property.
Okay, so it's just on, all right, well, I still, and that's fine, but I still feel like, you know, we should just kind of put them, you know, on notice and make them aware of what we're looking at doing. So we're not putting ourselves, you know, out there to, you know, and I, and I realize, you know, we can get sued over anything, but I just, I, you know, it's better to kind of do it pre than post.
I think it would be neighborly, you know, to send them a letter that they're gonna be, we're rezoning it, here's the reason why. I know by law, we're not required to, but I don't know, if we ever wanna purchase that, if, if they were to sell, we would like for them to hope be on our side, that the village would be interested in purchasing that property, expand the park. Whereas if we just up and do it, then I don't think I'd be as willing to work with the village.
Yeah, that's a good point, too.
Does that affect their business at all if it's, if it's, um, rezoned?
No, they can continue to operate as a non-conforming. So even if they sold their business and it did the same thing, that new business could still operate as well in capacity.
Effectless as what you can't do in the future, once the property's sold.
Yeah, so if they tore it down, they would have to comply with the, the new, or they changed the use of that building.
Or if, or if they ceased operating the site for more than 12 months. And there's all sorts of ways they can lose non-conforming use status, but, but they would have if the property was rezoned and they were continuing to use it in a way that they had been using it, they can continue doing that for as long as they continue doing that. They can't expand it, they can't stop it for a long period of time and then try to restart it.
Well, um, you know, is that something then we should draft and send out to them, or how does the rest of the board feel about it? You know, Al brought up a good point about being neighborly, you know, everybody's talked about acquiring that parcel when they move on out of the village and. You know.
Yeah, no, it makes perfect sense, if we're gonna do that, then we need to add that other parcel in the mix too. The, uh, the other one on South Lawn, that's immediately next door to the zombie property.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, be consistent about it, I would think, but you know, to me, I, I think if, if we wanna potentially have them give us first writ of refusal, you know, as they go to sell, I would wanna, I'd wanna be neighborly, so that we at least have that option, whereas if I didn't know about it and you did it, not that we're doing something CDM, I'm just saying, we're gonna do it by the law, but I think we can do more than that.
Chip, was there a third property on South Lawn at the, at the bend with Garden Parkway?
At the bend with Garden, that's already R3.
Great, according to our zoning map.
It's NMU, it looks like it's NMU.
Which, which one are you talking about then? Oh, that one there. I don't think that was part, that's, you tell me, if you want that. I don't, I don't have the law sitting, I mean, when I say you tell me, you tell me what you want. I don't remember whether, I'd have to look at the law, let me see if I can find, pull it up. Let me answer, forget about me pulling it up, just talk, is that, do you want that in there too? And I can confirm it either is, or if it's not, we can add it.
Uh, I think it makes sense, I think it is in there.
Yeah, otherwise it'd be kind of weird.
Yeah, we talked about keeping NMU on the.
And actually, now that we say that, I think it probably is included, because I think that was pretty much where we came down, is we were. The NMU was gonna stay on the, on the west side of the street, R3 on the right side of this, or the east side of the street.
Right.
But I'll confirm that.
Okay, all right, well, so, so next step, so, so you're sending the deed paper over to Dan Delano, Mayor? And, uh, um, and he's gonna take care of that for us. We're gonna, so the village is gonna send out, I guess, three letters saying that we're pursuing a rezoning of your property. One to International Chimney, one to the person at the intersection with Garden Parkway, and one to South of 96 South Lawn. And we've already held a public hearing on this. Um, which came hot on, at the exact same time that we were arguing about the exit from Natale. So I'm pretty sure that hearing was closed.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't remember whether it was closed or not, I, um, but we can confirm that by looking at the minutes, I mean, the other procedural elements, I, I, you know, I outlined those in an email previously, but you know, the planning board has to review that and make a recommendation. Erie County has to get referred this, I don't know whether that, I don't remember whether that referral was made or not. Because all of this stuff was outlined, you know, a long time ago, but, um, and then, you know, that's it, once we have the actual parcels all described legally and have an updated map, then the, and get the rec- a recommendation from the planning board, then the board can act and on it.
All right, well, so for the planning board then, theoretically, I can't attend the July meeting. So, um, you know, unless someone else wants to represent this conversation with them, I can postpone that conversation with them till August or September, whatever their next meeting is after that.
Well, what I would say, I don't, I don't know that you can't attend that meeting. I think you would absent yourself from that meeting during any discussion of 135 Evans Street. But you could, you could certainly present this issue to the planning board.
Okay, all right.
I think, I think it's a good idea, Matt, because you really are probably the best first at all of this than.
My baby, right?
What's that?
I said, it's my baby, right?
Yeah, yeah, so like, I think, you know, it's good. All right, any, anything else on that, or do you wanna move on?
No, I think we can move on.
All right.
The, the other, the other code items, I, those are things that I'm, Matt and I, I think are just gonna have to continue to work on together. You know, we're, we're, we're adopting local laws at a pretty healthy clip so far this year, we're up to 10. Makes it a record this year, so, but, but, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to work on those.
Okay, yeah, I just put them on there, Deb, so we don't lose.
Yeah, so we don't forget about them.
Yep.
Yeah, it's good, I, I, I actually like having Old Business on until we finish it, because it does get forgotten otherwise a lot of times, so. Um, okay, do you have anything else, Matt, or are you all?
I'm done.
John, do you have anything for work session?
No, no, I just wanna say that hopefully we'll have another traffic and safety meeting over Zoom. And then I reached out to Pete about Glen Park, um, and he did not seem too thrilled about the idea of a Zoom call. But I'll ask him again if he wants to do one soon.
Oh, hosting a Glen Park meeting via Zoom?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, the other thing, I just wanna clarify, you know, while, while I'm thinking about it. There was a question by the Glen Park Joint Board, um, they were questioning the new Main Street banners and they were under the impression that the funding for those banners came from Glen Park Joint Board account funding. And I just wanted to, perhaps if you could relay back to them.
Yes.
Um, the money for those banners, um, came from two sources. One was from the Arts and Culture Committee, their fund. And the second funding source was from monies raised by the Glen Park Arts Festival. And which, you know, as you know, their primary goal is to, you know, when they raise funds, to put them back into the community and the arts or culture and, you know, investment type, so if you could just clarify that with them, that no money was taken from their account for those banners.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
I'd appreciate it.
Certainly.
Okay.
And, uh, and just quickly again, remind me, how much were the banners?
Twenty-nine oh seven.
Twenty-nine oh seven, yeah, so less than three grand.
Yes.
Okay, I had a three in my head, but I, three hundred seemed cheap.
Yeah, well, I think, I think there was some confusion, I think they, there, maybe they think they have like, because the falls are depicted on those banners, I think they think they have like a copyright, um, to maybe the, the Glen Falls itself, so, um, that could be what.
Then we don't even own those. The Ganges, because the Ganges own the falls.
Yeah, you have a very good point, very good point. I don't know if you wanna tell the joint board that.
We don't own the mill either on the village seal, so.
Make sure you tell it at a Zoom call where you're not across the table.
Oh, yeah, yep.
All right.
Wear pearls and bring muffins.
All right, so, um, okay, so trustee Yates', um, work session?
Yeah, I mean, we've already kind of talked about the mural updates and nothing there, need to do anything there. Um, in talking with, uh, the committee regarding diversity, I don't think the, the chairperson of Arts and Culture wanted to really put it there. But we may end up putting together a culture diversity committee, um, in the near future, and we'll talk further about that. But I would like to potentially CS as a board adopt Juneteenth as a, as one of our village holidays for next year. Um, so I'd like to put that on next, uh, board meetings agenda that we added, because I know several other municipalities have had it as well. So I think that in support of all that's been going on, I think that's one thing we can do as a village. That's all I really have.
Okay, um, department heads, Attorney Greco?
Um, no, nothing really, uh, that we haven't already talked about. I will just report, I guess, that the ZBA held its first Zoom meeting last week and that actually went very, very smoothly. It was, it was, uh, it was good. Unfortunately, they're probably gonna be back to regular meetings after that, because it went very well, but, um, so that was good. I was a little bit concerned because I hadn't done one yet, but it, uh, it went very smoothly.
Okay, uh, Judy, you have the yoga class?
Oh, we just have another, um, yoga class that's gonna start, and this is Monica Zuko. And she has been doing free classes in Garrison Park for the past two years, this'll be her third year, so uh, she'll be doing Saturday mornings unless anybody, and anybody has any objection.
Nope.
What happened with the other one that?
So now, are they, are those, Judy though, are, are those limited to, are they?
There's, there's socially distancing, yes, they're supposed to be, they've been told that they have to follow social distancing and gathering size limitations. So are we going in and checking? No, but they, they're all told that in their agreements with us. In their agreements with us.
So, um, you know, Lauren's been, uh, doing, um, yoga training certification course here during COVID and everything. So would it be a conflict of interest for me for next year to establish her as the sole franchise yoga teacher for all the parts?
It's free. She can be, she can be the coordinator. Now, there, um, Al, you asked about Rising Sun?
Yeah.
When I sent him the email telling him that it was, you know, the two, the two municipalities and. That it would have to be a free class and he was not too happy and he responded not too kindly, but said that, you know, after nine years he's been doing this and he finally decided that he should reach out and he's sorry he did. But he is not going to use our, any of our parks because he did not want to do free classes.
Okay, well, that's the beauty of, that's the beauty of America.
All right.
All right, moving on. Ben, do you have anything?
No, nothing additional at this point.
Uh, Keaton, I noticed you have a couple of things.
So, yep, just wanted to update everybody on the, um, LWRP. Uh, we met for the first time via Zoom, uh, after about a three and a half month hiatus. Uh, the last time we had met was late February. So, um, we're able to kind of catch up on everything. Um, because we met via Zoom, um, it is, uh, recorded and it's on our website. So it kind of, it, it, it is a kind of a help because it's, uh, even more of a record than, uh, the notes that Wendy Salvati provides. Um, and I had some of those up on the screen earlier. Um, we did talk about the wall and how that can be incorporated into the plan. Um, and the next meeting is on July. Um, let me see here, we chose, we did choose July ninth, but, uh, I noticed that the Traffic Safety Committee. Um, which actually met the same night as LWRP, uh, they were going to choose July ninth. So I moved it to the seventh, so we're going to meet on Tuesday, July seventh, and, um, it'll also be via Zoom. Just so that it, it's a little easier for everybody at, at that juncture, at this juncture of everything going on. So, um, that's all I have on that. And, um, on Friday, I sent out, uh, an email about the WBA updates. You know, if anybody has any questions about that, let me know, but, uh, right now it's pretty straightforward. They're just, they're doing what they can to help the members get going again, so. And that's all I have.
So for the LWRP, are they, are they? What, what's their next step? Are they soliciting project lists or are they already working on that or?
Actually, yeah, our next step now is. We will, uh, we have a draft list of proposed uses for, um, for the waterway. Um, and we have a bunch of ideas for the waterways' future, what can be built, what, um, um, ways of approving it. Do we need, you know, kayak launches, et cetera, all those little things. Um, and we'll be giving everything to the state by the end of the summer. Um, all of our drafts. So, um, we're on draft. Forget where we left off. We are on, um. Wendy's going to follow up with the DEC regarding the flooding and erosion study. Um, she's going to do that between now and the next meeting. Uh, Lauren Darcy, our, um, Buffalo Nagger Riverkeeper. Delegate will be continuing to investigate with Corps, Army Corps of Engineers. And, um, yeah, everything's on target so that we can, uh, you know, send some drafts to the, uh, uh, to the state by the end of the summer, early fall. So, uh, we want to have a community meeting, possibly in the fall again. We held one last October. We want to do that again. I think it would be better to wait a little while, um, see how, uh, the COVID pandemic moves along. Um, if there's another influx or not. So, um, if not, we may have to kind of change direction and, um, we may have to host a virtual one. So we'll, we'll just kind of have to play that by ear by the end of summer, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Um, I just have one, one thing I forgot to mention, Ben, you, we had talked about nature play signage and we had looked at some drawings. Um, that were given by a artist. She actually did revisions based upon our feedback at our last meeting. And I, um, he got buried in my email, so I will get them over to everyone for your, for your review. And then, Ben, I'd like to talk about who I could go to to get some pricing on having those fabricated. And I, and I'm just looking to have it done the same way as the one that's over at South Lawn Park by the bathrooms. So just something very simple and I, I'm just looking, instead of one big one, like the size that's over there, I'd like to do two. Um, individual smaller ones, you know, in that, not that size, though, like cut in half, so.
Okay. I mean, I might recommend actually getting them plotted to size so that we have an idea what their scale is.
Okay.
I don't know that you have that, that actual scale that you want to do it.
Yeah, I do. I, I can, so I, maybe what I'll do is maybe we could, um, meet over there at Glen Park sometime. And we could kind of pick the two sites where we think that those signs might be most appropriate and in best view. And then maybe you could give me a little guidance on what type of size might work for that area. We can kind of take it from there.
Yeah, okay. And then the, um, the entrance sign that Kelly's husband did, I've, I've sourced some, uh. A little more difficult than I thought. It would be some locust posts to use as.
Great.
A signpost, basically, sort of a natural rustic, uh, well, uh, material that will endure. Buried in, in earth. Um, it's the same material that they use for great posts and hot poles. Um, so that's. Coming together. I know where there is a whole grove of them along the canal in front of my house, but the town of Amherst won't let me cut them, so. I have to find somebody in the southern tier that I work with to.
Did you name drop when you called the town and asked? Did you?
Just go out at night. No, I don't know.
Which name? Dan Delano said it was okay.
Oh, there's lots of names. Uh, well, we can talk offline about that.
Yeah, well, now they're, they're nervous and jerky about it being Canal Authority property. So. I don't know how they can prune the entire bike path, but not selectively remove two, we, locust trees, but that's a whole nother conversation. So anyway, that's, that's moving forward and we'll have that up here in a few weeks.
Oh, good. That's exciting. I'll, I'll have to share a picture of that, or maybe we'll wait till the unveiling. Everyone can see it, huh? Okay, good. All right, well, I'll be in touch with you and we can, you know, figure that out.
Yep.
Any, anybody have anything else before we adjourn, um, that they forgot or left off the agenda or?
Don't forget to vote tomorrow.
I know, primary day.
Yeah.
I've already voted. Oh, yeah, I'd like to, um, I, I guess I would like to just quickly comment on an article in the Amherst Bee that was, uh, documenting the return of results for the, um. Uh, Williamsville School District vote. Uh, annually, for the last three years, they've had in-person voting and in the range of about three thousand people. Uh, this year, because it was a completely mail-in vote, they had over twelve thousand people vote. So vote early and vote often, participate in your mail-in vote if you can.
Wow.
Yeah, I'm curious, and I don't, I haven't heard anything about it, but what safety protocols the election board is going to have in place in Village Hall and at the meeting house?
Yeah, I'm curious, too.
I'm opening the doors.
Something, there's something on, online here. I just saw an article, I think it was Channel Four.
Yeah, but you know who was monitoring the election, I mean.
Yeah, it says what to expect for Election Day tomorrow. So I don't know where it is now, but there is, there is information out there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be curious to see what the poll watchers do.
They probably all have masks and.
I, I'm hoping that Erie County Board of Elections provides them with a supply of masks, otherwise they're going to be coming to our counter asking for them.
Here it is. Got it right here. WIVB, uh, let's see. Voters should expect to take cautions, bring a mask with them. If not, it will be provided at the polling site.
Yeah.
They're, um, they're expected to wear it. If they decline, they will be isolated within the poll site and a ballot will be brought to them and they'll have the opportunity to vote, but they're going to be moved away from the other voters.
Wow.
Okay.
So there you go. That's pretty much it.
Matt, um, this one, Matt, can you hear me?
I can.
The one thought I had that I was going to say earlier that, um, was regarding, uh, getting volunteers for the, uh, park portion. When we get ready to call that, is we should reach out to the co-op and see about, uh, maybe instead of doing a cleanup like they've done, is let's, let's get those people involved. Um, and we should, I think at the farmer's market, too, when you come out, that we should be signing people up at that point, too.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, and we can put stuff in the, at the, uh, the, the tent as well for handout, you know, so people can take something and sign up or email. You know, Keaton to say, hey, we can help this date. So those are two other ideas that I came up with as we chatted.
Great.
So. All right.
Okay, well, um, if no one has anything else, we'll just, um, stay safe, everyone, and we'll see you at the next Zoom meeting on July thirteenth.
Good night.
Thanks, Scott.
Good night.
Have a good night, everybody.